Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to this afternoon's work session. It's good to see so many people coming out. And I will start with page 46. Mr. Pat McDougall, Department of Recreation and Parks.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones and esteemed members of the Baltimore County Council. I'm Pat McDougall, Planner 3 with Department of Recreation and Parks. I am here representing the agency and Director Bob Smith. Today, we are here to seek approval for a land exchange with the Maryland Transportation Authority adjacent to Mount Vista Park on Rayfield Road. It's in the Kingsville area. The county would exchange 25.4 acres of county-owned land in exchange for about 35.7 acres of property owned by the state. In addition to the land exchange, there would also be a conveyance of approximately, well, of $2,750,000 from the Maryland Transportation Authority to the county. Those funds would then be invested in improvements to Mount Vista Park, including the additional land that we would be receiving from the Maryland Transportation Authority.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the members? Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McDougall, for being here today. Thank you to your department for working on this. Thank you, Ms. Rogers, for your leadership and the county executive. I've been working on this for about nine years. In the 2000s, the state purchased property on Raphael Road in Kingsville for a maintenance facility for Interstate 95. This exchange will move that facility next Interstate 95 where it has less of an impact on the community. We will acquire a very highly desirable park site, and we will gain $2.7 million from the state. So this is a really good exchange. This is a win-win for everyone, and I applaud all those at the state and county levels who have worked on this over the past decade. So thank you both very much and all the other actors. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. McDougall.
Thank you.
We will now move to page 51, Resolution 3923. Councilman Otel, Towson Revitalization.
Thank you, Chair. This is a minor amendment to the... Not on page 51, but that's okay. This is a minor amendment to the Towson Commercial Revitalization District. Edenwald, the residential property, is currently in the district, and they have a development they're doing with Goucher College. And they had asked us to put that property, which is directly abuts it into the commercial revitalization zone for Towson as well. So that's all we're really doing.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? I don't see any speakers. Moving right along to appointments. Appointments to the Fair Election Fund. Ms. Marietta English, please come up. Ms. English? How are you doing? Good, good. Have a seat over there. Ms. English, thank you so much for your willingness to serve on the Fair Election Fund. You've been nominated. Can you tell us... Well, I know an awful lot about you, and I thank you for your service with education for many, many years. But for those that may not know, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name is Marietta English. I am a lifelong educator. I taught for 50 years. I served for 21 years as the president of the Baltimore Teachers Union, 13 years as the president of AFT Maryland, and I also was the first teacher to be elected to serve as president of the National Alliance of Black School Educators. I've always been in education all of my life. I started serving children at the age of 17, and I was a Girl Scout leader, and I've never stopped. I'm very interested in education and now politics.
Well, Ms. English, I ask you, tell us a little bit about yourself. What have you been doing with your time in all these years? That's a joke. That's a joke. I think 50 years says it all, right?
Yes. Teaching. I've been an adjunct professor. I've taught grades pre-K through 12. I've taught... I'm also chair of the NAACP AXO Program. If you don't know what that is, it's the Afro... Afro... I'm sorry. Brain freeze. Afro Cultural Technological Scientific Olympics of the Mind, of which we work with students in grades 9 through 12 in 25 categories, and we have a local competition. And we take our gold medal winners to the national competition for the NAACP. I've been doing it for 20 years. The only year we did not have a winner of some sort was the year of COVID. We've always brought back either mostly gold and silver and bronze. Last year, we had two gold medal winners, a bronze medal winner, a silver medal winner, and one of our students won a $10,000 scholarship given by Lancome. So we're very proud of our students in Baltimore County. Right now, I substitute. Just can't leave them alone. Just can't leave it alone. So right now, I'm a substitute teacher in Baltimore County.
Well, I tell you, I'm sure the other teachers and staff and students enjoy having you there, and I'm sure they appreciate the wealth of knowledge and experience you bring to the classroom. And I'm happy that you still choose to serve our young people. We appreciate it very, very much.
Absolutely.
Good. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What school... You taught in Baltimore City, you said?
Baltimore City, yes. I taught at Cross Country Elementary, Fall Staff, Cross Country Elementary, Fall Staff, Lafayette Elementary, Northwestern Night School, where I taught adults, and then...
What particular grade?
Second and third. Those are my favorite, but I've taught all of the grades. I'm a special educator too as well. So I worked in special education as well.
Was a teacher in Baltimore County. Whenever I go into a school, they'll say, you know, "We need substitutes." I said, "I'm sorry, I can't be a substitute in Baltimore County because I'm on the county council." So that's my excuse.
Yeah, so I...
They do the same to my wife, who was a teacher. So I understand. Were you substituting what schools?
I substituted Winans, Camp Hill, Scotch Branch, wherever they needed me.
Good. Very good. Because I think that people who have been teachers for a long time, I think that to bring them in as substitutes is really good. And I would love to see retired teachers go into some of our schools and help students who are behind.
Right. That is my goal.
Yeah.
When I go in and I see that students are struggling, those are the ones I enjoy working with. I just... It's just something I do.
Thank you.
I know how to teach.
Yes.
And I know how to teach reading. And I don't need a smart board and all these other new fancy things. I know how to teach reading.
I'm sure.
So that's what I try to do.
Thank you.
I go in with that plan in mind.
Good. If I can help you, let me know.
Sure will. Thank you.
Councilman Petoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. English?
Yes, sir.
Is it true that you reside in the beautiful 2nd District of Baltimore County?
I sure do.
Okay. I just wanted that to go down on the record. And so I want to thank you for all you do for not only children in the 2nd District and families in the 2nd District, but throughout Baltimore City and Baltimore County from your teachings at Fall Staff and Cross Country. And so just want to thank you for your public service, and you're one of the many people in the beautiful 2nd District that give back to the community. I'm glad to see you here today. We have many here that are going to speak today that also work hard to make the 2nd District as strong as it can be. So thank you again, Ms. English.
Thank you.
The 3rd District is better, though. I want you to know that. You can come over, visit. I'll show you.
I'll come and visit, but I like to.
Mr. Chair?
Very good.
When Councilman Marks makes a statement like that, could I ask all my friends from the 2nd District to make this sound together? Let's give it a try. One, two, three.
Is that a trick question? Because Councilman Marks wouldn't talk.
Oh, I mean, Councilman Katz.
Is that like Simon Says?
Sorry, Councilman Marks. Councilman Katz is looking younger every day. I'm going to shut my mic off.
So, Ms. English, I'm going to add that we certainly appreciate your service to teachers and educators in terms of your leadership in the union, your leadership on the American Federation of Teachers.
Yes.
And, you know, at the end of the day, we need people to speak up and advocate for our educators. So I thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Sure. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
I just want to say that I raised two children in Baltimore County, and they are both teachers. My son teaches in the city, and my daughter teaches in Delaware, so...
Good.
It's about giving back to our children.
Absolutely. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much, Ms. English.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, for Fair Election Fund would be Mr. David Mister...
Chairman Jones?
Always a pleasure.
Councilman, good evening. My name is David Mister. I am a law school grad, 1973. Before that, I matriculated and graduated as part of the first graduating class from the University of Maryland Baltimore County. And then I went to the University of Maryland Law School, from which I graduated in 1973. Became a member of the bar in 1974 and have consistently been a member, a good standing of that, and still practicing. 50 years next June. I then was an Assistant State Attorney for Baltimore County from 1974 to 1980, the generation before Mr. Boswick in the State's Attorney's Office. I also was a Special Assistant State Attorney for Carroll County, Calvert County, Frederick County, and Queen Anne's County, mostly with Dutch Ruppersberger, where we specialized in wiretap and electronic surveillance law, something those counties rarely did. So they brought us in to assist them. I left the State's Attorney's Office in October of 1980 to found a law firm along with Dutch Ruppersberger and another former Assistant State Attorney for Baltimore County, and have continued to practice in Timonium that entire time. The name of the firm has changed through the years from Ruppersberger, White, Winter, Clark &amp; Mister. It's now Mr. Winter &amp; Bartlett. I had the opportunity for working as a volunteer in my former boss, Sandra O'Connor's reelection campaigns and in the campaigns for county council, Baltimore County Executive, United States Congress for Dutch Ruppersberger. I've never held elective office, not been a political lobbyist. After leaving the State's Attorney's Office, one of the things I did as sort of a partial public service, I should say, was I joined the federal panel for defendants who were indigent, for whom the federal public defender had a conflict. Generally, in federal court, you often have multiple defendant cases. The federal public defender can only represent one defendant, and I've continued to serve on that. It's been very interesting, I will say. I have testified extensively as an informational witness on legislative matters before the Maryland General Assembly, mostly on legislation that I helped to draft, and this council based upon my experience in legal matters and that have come before those bodies for legislation. I've had an interest in election politics and studying political science at UMBC. At this point in my career, I feel it's important to engage in pro bono public service. I've been doing this long enough that I've got some leisure time, even though I still work full-time. And I'm the boss, though, I can kind of decide when I'm working and when I'm not, as long as the clients allow it. I've done my share of volunteer work through the years, mostly in university alumni affairs and fundraising, as the president of the UMBC Alumni Association, president of the University of Maryland Alumni Association International, and a director of the University System of Maryland Foundation, to which Freeman Robowski, president of UMBC, nominated me, former president of UMBC, as well as Baltimore County Bar Association activities. This would be an opportunity for me to volunteer, to do something that will more broadly benefit citizens of Baltimore County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mister. I have known you for a number of years and have always known you to be a decent, honorable, smart person and thoughtful. So needless to say, I'll be supporting you as well as Ms. English, and I appreciate your willingness to serve. I know you don't have to, neither one of you. God knows, Ms. English, I don't know where she finds the time to do anything. But I certainly appreciate your willingness to serve. And are there any questions or comments from the members? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Thank you for the kind remarks.
Sure. Next, I'll move on to another appointment, but this appointment will go to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. It's Marcella Williams? Watts? I'm sorry. Thank you. Education is fundamental. Ms. Watts? Going once, going twice, Chris?
Mr. Chair, she doesn't seem to be online unless she is on by phone.
Okay.
We can look into that, Mr. Chairman.
Please. And Ms. Watts, if you're there, please post up. Let us know where you are, and we will stop the program and then put you back in rotation. Next, I'll move on to the Design Review Panel nomination for Mr. Donald Kahn. Mr. Kahn, how are you?
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Good, good. Mr. Kahn, can you... We appreciate your willingness to serve on the Design Review Panel. If you can be so kind as to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Certainly. So I am a lifelong Marylander. I went to college at North Carolina State, and after graduation, spent two years in the military in Korea at the beginning of the Vietnam War. And I started my first architectural firm in the county in 1974. And we've practiced... I'm continuing as a licensed architect. I've practiced professionally since then. I've had my own firm for a number of years and have had the good fortune of being part of this Design Review Panel in the county previously. This is a continuation of that. But I've also served on a number of commissions, volunteer commissions, and boards. I was on the Baltimore City Historic Preservation Commission for 25 years and chairman for a number of those years. I've been on the board of the Volunteers of America for a period of time and still do volunteer work for them. And I've been on a number of statewide preservation organizations that exist throughout the area. And I think I've been... Recognize how important this Design Review Panel effort really has been, both in terms of meeting reasonable expectations of design in the county, providing some guidance to design firms and developers that are presenting to us. And I think just from my experience with a variety of different project types over many years, it adds value and some insight into what we're doing, and I would welcome the opportunity to continue for a period of time.
Thank you very, very much. We, again, appreciate your level of expertise and your willingness to serve. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Councilman Petoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Kahn.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. I want to speak on behalf of Mr. Kahn. I've known him for many, many years. He's a fine architect. He's got a great design eye, and he's well thought of in the design and architectural community. I also think that you've heard from Mr. Kahn that his service is outstanding, and I just want to thank you for stepping up once again, Mr. Kahn.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was just...
Councilman Katz?
Councilman Petoka, is your wife a better architect than he is?
Whoa, that's a loaded question, Councilman Katz.
I know. That's why...
I will say that they're both fine architects. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments from the members?
Didn't expect that, did you?
Not sure why the camera keeps drifting. Thank you very much, Mr. Kahn.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to seeing you Monday. Another nominee or appointment for the Design Review Panel, Tarek Saleh. Is that correct? Come and straighten me out. Come on, come on, come on up. Have a seat and tell me how to pronounce your name correctly so I don't mess it up again, and I apologize.
Hello, everybody.
Hello?
Yes, my name is Tarek Saleh.
Tarek Saleh?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Well, if you don't mind, again, we appreciate your willingness to serve, and if you could tell us something about yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. Yes. I am originally Lebanese. I came to this country. I was 23 years old. Went to school at Morgan State University, graduated there with a master's degree in architecture. And I have been working in the state of Maryland for about 20 years now. I'm a licensed architect in the state. Most of the work that I have done in the last 20 years has been focused on a lot of urban design, urban planning projects in the state and neighboring states. My focus has been on mixed-use multifamily projects, commercial, institutional. I'm actually working on a project right now at the University of Maryland. So a lot of it involves public-private partnerships. In most of my career, I spent a lot of time presenting to Design Review Boards and committees. So I have a good understanding of the value of these committees and how they can shape and help shape the communities that we live in. I think architecture is one of those professions that has a big impact on the lives of people. I'm very much interested in giving back to this amazing state, amazing country, that all of what it's given me throughout the years. I want to... That's sort of finding ways to give back is my drive to join this committee. I've also served on the AIA Maryland Board. I've been a member of the ACE Mentorship Committee for about 15 years now. This is a committee that essentially partners with local schools around the country and introduces young kids to the profession of architectural construction and engineering. So I've served on that board as well. So I've worked with schools in Baltimore City and Baltimore County as part of my participation with that committee. So happy to be here today.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. Are you familiar with... Where do you live in the county?
Towson.
I didn't hear what you said.
Towson.
Towson, okay.
Yeah, just down the street.
So I'm sure you're familiar with Old Lutherville?
Absolutely, yes.
Which is a National Historic District with Victorian homes, and it's a wonderful neighborhood.
Absolutely. I have friends who live in that neighborhood.
Okay. Oh, good, good. So next to it, there are 12 acres that a developer would like to redevelop...
Okay.
...into a transit stop for the library. My question is, what could... What services could the Review Panel provide to the developer and to the community so that when the redevelopment is planned, that it will be an asset to historic Lutherville? Some comments there, because it's very important to me that the character of this area remain the same and not be compromised with, you know, buildings that clash...
Absolutely.
...what's there.
No, absolutely. I agree. And, you know, part of the reason I actually have been interested is I've been seeing sort of the impact on a lot of the development happening downtown Towson. I've been a longtime resident, and I see how that impacts the visual character of the area. So I think I'd definitely be interested in monitoring the... As a Design Review... On the Design Review Panel, I'd be very much interested in getting an understanding of, first of all, the traffic conditions that a development like that would impact the area, to the architectural character, for sure you mentioned that, the materiality of the building, the scale, size, its impact on neighboring buildings, the amount of green space that these developments would provide and access to that green space to the residents around the area, because you're not going to provide a development that essentially cuts off neighboring communities. You want to be able to bridge and connect neighboring communities together and make that a public amenity so that people can enjoy some of those spaces and use them. Also, looking at the amount of commercial spaces that those developments provide, you want to create an active, vibrant environment for residents to engage with and be able to create sort of economic development around it as well and give back some of those, you know, to the county in terms of tax dollars that those businesses could generate. So there's a lot of things that we can take a look at that, that we can help drive any development that would happen in the county.
Would you be willing to meet with me and a few others just to discuss this in general?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gan, is he still here? Gone as well. It would be very helpful.
Absolutely, yeah. It would be my pleasure. That's why I'm here.
Okay, good, good. So we have your contact information? Okay, good. We'll contact you after the New Year to sit down and...
It would be my pleasure.
Get a few ideas from you, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Saleh, I'd say as a 6th District resident, you answered that question in an excellent way.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. We look forward to appointing you. We look forward to appointing you.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Saleh, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Another appointment to the Design Review Panel, Ms. Rajendra Sharma.
Good afternoon, this is Raj Sharma, you can call me Raj Sharma.
Okay, Raj, thank you. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate your willingness to serve. If you would like to tell us a little about yourself, and feel free to turn your camera on only if you like.
I hope the camera is on now, I hope.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, got you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, present council members and the council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm an electronics engineer. I served Baltimore City for 20 years. I managed the signal system, ITS, and the traffic operation in Baltimore City for about 20 years as a section chief and a deputy chief. Currently, I'm working with the State Highway Administration and Artmo, similar type of business, managing and engaging the traffic operation and the projects with the traffic with the city. I've done several types of various projects, including the signals, traffic, and building renovations. So that's my background.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members? Raj, we certainly appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you for stepping up. And, you know, I'll move on to the next person that's being nominated, an appointment for the Ethics Commission, Mr. Kevin Murphy.
Good afternoon and thank you all for this opportunity.
Sure.
I guess you want to know a little bit about me. Retired Air Force veteran. I enlisted in 1971, retired in 2004. I served a total of 33 years. I, last 15 years of that, I was the first sergeant, managed people on deployments and on the base. I'm a proud father of a very, proud single dad of a very successful son, Patrick, who's, you know, doing very well. Currently, senior loan officer at Beacon Light Mortgage, which is a small firm in Baltimore County, licensed in Maryland, Delaware, and Pennsylvania. Currently, driving part-time for Brooks Hough because the mortgage business is kind of slow. I'm an assistant scoutmaster for the last 30 years with Troop 497 in Texas, Maryland, which is Cockeysville. I'm a board member of the Towson Chamber Commerce and co-chair of the Towson Parade. I'm a foundation board member for the Greater Baltimore Board of Realtors, providing grants to various charities in Maryland. Also served as a chair of their events committee for three years. I'm also a board member of the Baltimore Philharmonia, not Philharmonic, Philharmonia Orchestra, assisted them in getting back on their feet financially, and I'd be proud to serve Baltimore County.
Well, we thank you so much for your willingness to serve, and what was it? Philharmony?
Philharmonia, yes.
Philharmonia.
It's a small, small orchestra, probably about 30 members, but they asked me to try to help them get back on their feet.
Okay.
So I did that through some banking partners and that sort of thing, and they're doing okay now.
Well, I appreciate that very much. You know, fun fact, I played the trumpet from elementary, junior high, high school, and college.
Well, you should join this orchestra.
Well, now I guess blow a lot of hot air, but it doesn't make a lot of sound. Bada boom. Okay, bada boom. Any additional, any questions or comments from the members?
One chair.
Yes, let me fix this here. I should have done that in the first place. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, thank you for your willingness to serve, and one thing I would say is, Mr. Murphy has been kind of the jack of all trades on the Towson Chamber for many years and does whatever he needs to do, dealing with parking vouchers and all kinds of, you know, running the fair. So we're excited to have you in county service as well. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Dave.
Yes, Mr. Murphy, I'll make this final statement. First of all, thank you for your willingness to serve, but just as importantly, I'd like to thank all the folks that have been nominated for appointments, and I want to thank all of them for their willingness to serve. Baltimore County has an awful lot of boards and commissions, and that is how we're able to do the people's work each and every day, but we do it with the expertise and the willingness of people to step up and give their time. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've located Ms. Watts.
Okay, Ms. Watts.
Oh.
Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Hello.
Ms. Watts?
Hello.
Yes, if you can tell us a little bit about yourself, we appreciate it.
I currently work for the Department of Health and Human Services. I've been working there for seven years specifically in the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, where I help to regulate the Medicare programs to ensure recipients receive quality care. I am on the Emerging Leaders Committee with St. Vincent de Paul, and I am currently working with the Baltimore Junior League, and I do a lot of volunteer work with different shelters and organizations throughout Baltimore.
Okay, we thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Ms. Watts. We look forward to seeing or hearing from you Monday.
Sure, thank you.
Sure. Now I'll move on to page 39. Seth Blumen, Energy and Sustainability.
Administration is requesting approval of a contract with NLX Advisory Services to provide energy consultation services for electricity and natural gas procurements. Baltimore County Government, including the General Government, Community Colleges of Baltimore County, Baltimore County Public Library, and the Revenue Authority are participating entities in the consortium that comprises the Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee, consisting of 24 total county and local government jurisdictions in the central Maryland region. The purpose and mission of this consortium is to identify cooperative procurement opportunities, save participating entities money, time, and administrative burden through consolidation efforts. The strategy is based on purchasing electricity on an hourly and fixed-rate block purchasing structure. Energy price risk is managed in conjunction with an approved risk management policy. The current strategy is to build basically price stability by avoiding like a single-point exposure in energy purchases. So it's a six-month look ahead with a rolling three-year outlook as well. The contractor will provide energy procurement strategy and implementation, so they'll help us purchase electricity and natural gas in the marketplace for all the entities that I mentioned, the 24 of them, gather market data, provide monthly reports on the energy outlook, and procure a retail supplier to purchase electricity and natural gas on the wholesale markets. The contract commences upon council approval, continues to June 30th of '24, will renew automatically for nine additional one-year periods, with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term for an additional 120 days. Based on the fees included in the contract, the estimated compensation totals $8,508 for the initial approximate six-month term, and the MBE goal is 15% for the contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask, could you give us an idea since 2012, or at least the fiscal year 2012, how much we've saved?
Yes, it's $1,451,570 for electric. That's just the entities that I named, the colleges, the general government, and the libraries. If you add it, if you include the total, it's all, it's $1,730,000.
Got you. And what was our expenditure, sorry, and I jumped to the overall savings. What was our costs in fiscal year, sorry, '22 and '23?
$7.2 million and then $6.69 million. That's for electricity. For natural gas in '23, it was $1.7 million. We didn't get '22, we don't have, we're still looking for that information.
No worries, I'll continue the conversation offline. I just wanted to, you know, ask some detailed questions. I appreciate the testimony and the updates. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members? None? Thank you very much, Mr. Blumen.
Thank you.
Next, we'll call up Ms. Lauren Buckler. Page 43, everyone. Department of Public Works and Transportation.
Good evening, I'm Lauren Buckler. I'm the Deputy Director for Public Works and Transportation. I'm here on behalf of Director Walker to talk about a contract for the repair and recalibration of sanitary sewer flow meters. So this is an existing contract that we've had that we're seeking to do another contract on. This is how we measure the flow in the sewer system. The contract is with Teledigm Industries. It's for, as I mentioned, the repair and maintenance of these existing meters. So we have the meters, it's to keep them maintained as we're using them. It commences upon council approval and continues for one year and renews automatically for up to four additional one-year periods with the option to extend. The compensation can't exceed the amount on here, which is $141,760. Happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, go right ahead, Councilman. Thank you. Hi, Ms. Buckler, thank you for coming in today. Were you privy to the auditors' questions?
Yes, I was.
Okay, would you mind addressing the auditors' question on fiscal matter too?
Sure.
As far as the why the downsizing? I'm curious to know what the downsizing was. So why and what extent, and if you could dig into that question a little bit for us, I'd appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you.
These meters are a result of the consent decree. So as we've been moving through the consent decree, we've figured things out as we've gone. So what we've figured out is that we need to measure for less amount of time in more locations. So we've been able to change our strategy. Initially, we had them for very long periods of time in locations, but we can collect the data faster and then move them other places. So that's allowed us to work with less meters and then less maintenance on less meters.
Therefore, less cost.
Therefore, less cost, yes.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Ms. Buckler.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we'll call up Mr. Michael Freed.
Michael, how are you?
Well, sir, how are you?
Good.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Freedom, Director of the Office of Information Technology here in Baltimore County, affectionately known as the greatest office in all of Baltimore County. We're here requesting approval for a contract, a one-year contract with four renewal options, not to exceed value of $900,000, while the estimated costs are $145,000 per year. This is for the Cortico Guardian Wellness App. This is a mental health and wellness app targeted for public safety individuals. This was originally procured, excuse me, during the pandemic for the Police Department with CARES Act funding. Since then, the county has expanded this to include corrections and the 911 Center as well. And currently in use, we've got hundreds of users on the platform. So it's something that provides holistic mental health support for these individuals, allows us to customize if there are specific incidents or need specific response, and it's something that is really valuable for the members. So we are asking your approval. One note that had come from the auditors was whether or not the county felt like we could get, we should issue an RFP for this, get better fiscal terms. Over the last few years, this is an area that's actually matured in the market, so we believe that at this point, there's not a vendor that is comparable to the one that we have in place now. However, the reason we've structured the agreement with a one-year contract and then renewals is because we do fully expect to enter into an RFP within the next year, year and a half. Thank you for your time, take any questions you may have, sir.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? Yes, Councilman?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Freed, please do not, I think you've been infected. You've been infected by the shenanigans on some of the folks here, claiming your agency is the greatest. They always claim that their districts are the greatest. Don't listen to these people up here, or don't be like them, anyway. On a serious note, though, so we, this mobile app, we first engaged using federal money, was it, did you say ARPA or CARES?
I believe it was CARES.
It was CARES. So is this one of those instances where something that was paid for out of COVID money that has turned into a recurring expense, would you say?
I think that this is something that we found a need for, a pressing need for during the pandemic, and used COVID money at that point, and then has, because of how effective it's been for the members of the public safety organizations, something that we've wanted to adopt into the general fund budget of the county. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not discounting the, or discounting or disputing the need or even the efficacy of this particular technology. I do understand that for our first responders in the environment that we are in now and have been for the past several years, that mental health is certainly of a concern and something that we should, we should be helping our people out with. Certainly agree with that. But my radar always goes off a little bit, as Ms. Rogers knows, radar goes off a little bit when we look at COVID relief package money spent that become long-term expenditures in the overall county budget moving forward. So just wanted to be clear on that aspect of this contractual relationship.
Yes, sir, and the only thing I would note is that during COVID, it was concepted that this would be for the Police Department, but over the last few years, as I've said, it's grown into other, these other departments. So again, while I take your point, it is proving its value.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Chair, I believe Ms. Rogers has something to say. Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Yes, good evening, gentlemen, and Councilman Crandall, yes, I acknowledge your position about CARES Act and the entire COVID relief direction, but what I'll say with respect to this particular platform is had we not had a pandemic and had federal money, it's something that the county should have looked into and should continue to support for the mental health needs of our first responders. The federal money that was made available for programs like this gave us an opportunity to really explore whether this is something that would be effective for our first responders. And ironically enough, it was more than overwhelmingly effective based on the use and the feedback coming out of the Police Department, and that was the reason why it was expanded to support the other part of the portfolio, the... the public safety portfolio. The impact, the mental health impact to that part of the government was exacerbated by the pandemic. However, the need for such intervention always existed. And so the federal money really gave us an opportunity to examine ways and strategies to support the public safety part of our government, who experienced incredible stress, incredible, you know, situations that the average person will never experience in their lifetime. So that's why I'll say that while, you know, the belief is that the federal money was for one time things, my position on that, the federal money gave us an opportunity to really examine what I would say is interventions to help particularly the public safety part of the government.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I do, I do appreciate what you said, and I fully support the measures like this that we take to support our, our personnel out in the field. I just, per my usual theme, just, just putting the caution out there as to creating ongoing expenses, recurring expenses with one-time money. And I would have, I would have to agree with you that this is, this is an instance where we were, as you said, we were enabled by federal dollars to look into something that we otherwise might not have gone down that road. And if this is helping our people, then this is something I think that we should probably, this is a contract we should, we should support and get behind.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes.
One, Chair. Hopefully, this helps us also with retention and also overtime costs. I don't think the public is fully aware of the fact that our police department, our fire department, and our corrections department are overworked, stressed out, seeing more calls for service than ever, dealing with really, sometimes really terrible situations and something like this. And I understand where Councilman Crandall's coming with, you know, that we, as we've had CARES Act money, we don't necessarily want that to pile up on the, on our operating budget. But hopefully, this is, has some value in that, like I said, worker, firefighters or police or corrections officers who can possibly utilize these services aren't calling out sick or, or taking, you know, lots of time off and that they can get the services they need when they need them. So that's my, my hope here.
Yeah, I like to think that it is providing the support that our workforce needs. And again, based on the, the feedback and what encouraged the consideration of expansion was the feedback, because they have a tool that's readily available. And Mr. Freed, this is also available to 911?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah. Because it's, it's just an incredible, the, the jobs that our public safety sector employees do just by, by nature of what they do, it's just incredibly overwhelming. And that was exacerbated by the, the pandemic. So I'd like to think that it is having the intended outcome that the platform was designed to do.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Mr. Freed, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to Mr. Lawrence Richardson, Department of Health and Human Services. Mr. Richardson?
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones, members of the council. Baltimore County Department of Health, Animal Services Division, seeking your approval for a one-year contract with Dogwood Kennel. This one-year contract would be not to, not exceed $65,000. It's for emergency boarding and long-term kenneling of our animals. We often had to use Dogwood recently for some recent seizures of animals to hold them over while the cases were being adjudicated. Dogwood Kennel was able to keep our dogs, these dogs, separated from our dogs in our other shelter, so we wouldn't have overcrowding. So we're seeking this contract in order to go into a one-year contract with them and with plans of entering into an RFP to seek kennel services for the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes. Well, first of all, they do a very nice job around here. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Moving right along to page seven. Court Administrator, Circuit Court. Ms. Medina, how are you?
I'm good. Good evening, Chair. So the Circuit Court is requesting supplemental appropriation of state funds totaling $84,544 to be utilized for the access to justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're creating a DEI coordinator position in our Circuit Court, and the funds will primarily be used towards salary and benefits of the full-time position. So this is a fully funded state position that we're requesting approval for.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to page 10. Captain Brian Edwards. Captain?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Council. Before I begin on what I'm here for, I did want to just take a moment to thank the members of the council, Madam CAO, for recognizing the, the times that the public safety professionals in Baltimore County are going through, and thank you for supporting us. I'm here today to request the council's approval to accept 1.5, just under 1.5 million dollars from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention from their sexual assault kit testing fund. This is supplemental to a $300,000 award that we've already been given for annual safe kit testing. In the '70s, '80s, and '90s, Dr. Breitnecker at GBMC, a visionary emergency room doctor, collected evidence of sexual assault, preserved it on microscopic slides, long before DNA evidence was well-known or well-thought-of. In the early 2000s, Baltimore County Police became aware of these slides through some grant funding, were able to engage in a pilot project. These were proven viable for investigations and for DNA extraction. In 2018, a renewed effort was undertaken, partially kick-started by a very generous donation that came before the council from a local foundation, the Hackerman Foundation, that again, helped us prove the efficacy of these slides for testing. In the past Maryland legislative session, Senate Bill 789 was put forth by Senator Shelley Hettleman, a strong partner in this area to the county government. This defined the GBMC slides as safe kits under Maryland law and opened up many different avenues to us, including funding from this governor's fund for testing. Senator Hettleman, Scott Schellenberger, Maryland Coalition Against Sexual Assault, and Baltimore County Police all testified in behalf of that. GBMC pathology has since engaged in researching, inventory, and cataloging these slides. They were able to give us a definitive number of cases that still had slides and a total number of slides, which is able for us to plan this project in ways we haven't been able to do in the past 20 years. Under the existing agreements with our outsourcing labs, under the old agreements, this would have cost approximately $5.6 million. Both of those labs submitted new line items to the existing contracts, given the full accounting that GBMC gave us, reducing the total price to about $2.6 million. So this funding, $1.5 million, will supplement $500,000 from the county's operating funds, another $500,000 potential from ARPA revenue replacement, as well as another very generous $500,000 award from the Hackerman Foundation. So I'm very thankful to the support of the, the administration and from the governor's office to support Baltimore County's efforts to test these slides and support victims of sexual assault in Baltimore County.
Thank you very much, Captain. Any questions, comments from the members? Thank you very much. Moving right along with Renee Coleman, Acting Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Chairman Jones and council members.
Good evening, Ms. Coleman.
Okay. So Bill 9223 implements the changes to the Classification and Compensation Plan as recommended by the Personnel and Salary Advisory Board. Section 1 of the bill amends two classification in section 2 of the Classification and Compensation Plan specifically for the Chief Deputy Sheriff and Under Sheriff of classifications. There are also forthcoming amendments that will add pay grades to Schedule 1 and 6, pay grade changes for forensic services Tech 1 and 2, and new related forensic sciences classifications, which will all be effective January 1, 2024.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Sort of the same question that Councilman Crandall asked one of the previous votes. Were you, have you seen the questions from the auditors?
Yes.
Gotcha. Could you address those questions?
Yes. So the first one was in regards to the timing of the fiscal year negotiations. They were wrapped up a little late this year, mid-April. So we have put some measures in place to include facilitating negotiation meetings earlier than the previous year. So we've actually started those efforts this year.
Great. Have employees been receiving the higher negotiated salaries, or will they be receiving a one-time payment to cover the retro?
They will rece, oh, sorry. They will receive the one-time payment to cover the retroactivity.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention that the additional schedules that Ms. Coleman referenced via amendment, we are working on that, and we'll have that out to you all tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Coleman. Next, we'll have Mr. Kevin Reed, page 15.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. Thank you. This is an annual item of business that comes up each year. We are requesting approval of an ordinance that authorizes issuance and sale of up to $320 million of bond and bond anticipation notes, the authority to issue refunding bonds, and the purchase of development rights. And the county sells bonds and/or bands annually, as you know, to fund capital projects that have been approved by voter referendum in accordance with 719 of the county charter. And what is before you today is the authority to issue debt that was approved by the voters. The proceeds will be used to fund projects that were approved in our capital budget based on projected cash needs for each capital fund. So to break it down, Bill 9323 authorizes the county to issue up to $140 million in CPI bonds, including $100 million for schools, $118 million for public works, $15 million for the community college, $5 million for agricultural preservation, and $2 million for waterway improvements. And these are our projected cash needs based on what we need to make each capital fund whole at the end of the year. The bill also authorizes up to $180 million in metropolitan district bonds, including the issuances through the Maryland Water Quality, Maryland Infrastructure Revolving Loan Program, where the county may obtain lower subsidized interest rates. The bill also authorizes the county to refund callable debt on all of its outstanding issues, provided that there is a minimum 3% value savings to the county. Our financial advisor, as well as our Treasury Division, continuously monitors the market for any possible refunding opportunities, and it doesn't look like there will be one this year coming up, but we will continue to monitor the environment. The bill also authorizes the county to purchase development rights through an installment purchase program, or IPA, and that encourages agricultural landowners to sell land or preservation easements to the county. The ordinance allows OBF to issue debts for this purpose. With certain exceptions, the authority to issue bonds or bands expires next December 31 of 2024. Our debt issuance plan, as the note states, that bans our short-term, short-term notes and sold anticipation of issuing our longer-term debt at a later date, allowing the county flexibility. Currently, due to the fact that we have what we call an inverted yield curve, meaning that short-term rates are higher than the longer-term rates, the county will most likely issue bonds rather than bands at this upcoming issuance. However, we will continue to monitor the economic conditions. The county last issued last year $30 million of 20-year CPI serial bonds in March at 3.56% and $225 million, 30-year metropolitan district serial bonds at 4.06%. While the FY '23 borrowing ordinance authorized up to $70 million of CPI, we only needed to issue 30 as a result of other cash flow needs that we have. We estimate that we will issue up to $140 million in CPI bonds at approximately 4.1% and approximately $80 in the metro bonds for approximately 4.5% in this March, again, depending on the market conditions. When we look at issuances, we do a debt study every year, and we just completed one, and we are in compliance with all of our debt affordability ratios, and that's something we will constantly work with the spending affordability on. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Give me one second while I take a look here. We're going to move on to page 1. Mr. Benjamin, Bill 8323.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm James Benjamin. I'm county attorney presenting items 83-23 and 84-23 for consideration today. I presume you wanted to hear, excuse me, both together, 83-23 and 84-23? Okay. I believe that my colleague, Ms. Rowson, is going to present, or at least begin the presentation today. So I would turn it forward to Ms. Rowson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members.
Give me one second, let me get this right.
Oh, yep. I'm ready.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. As you know, I'm Kimmy Rowson, Deputy Director of Government Affairs, and I'm presenting items 8323 and 8423 for your consideration this evening. The Independent Blue Ribbon Commission on Ethics and Accountability was established to perform a comprehensive and public review of Baltimore County's existing ethics laws and the office of the Inspector General statute. The commission issued their final report in February of this year with recommendations that support a best-practice OIG model that is sustainable into the future. The bills before you are an aggregation of the recommendations and represent a balance between accountability measures and protective provisions for the OIG. Many are pulled verbatim from the critical work of the commission. The administration supports the bills as introduced, and I urge the council to resist any amendments that are not aligned with the recommendations of the commission. Thank you.
Well, I thank you very much. And what I will do, we have quite a few speakers, but let me start by giving an opening statement. Basically, I appreciate your testimony, and I appreciate everybody coming out and joining us online to discuss this very, very important issue. The reality is, there has been a tremendous amount of misinformation and disinformation that is being spread and reported on this issue. To be very, very clear, Monday, December 4, the only action the council took was to postpone the bill. It was not the only bill we postponed that day. We postponed another bill, that we will be hearing about that as well. That said, there were talk of amendments. At that time, those things were simply ideas due to a compilation of many stakeholders bringing forth information requests, concerns. At that point, someone released the information. At that point, someone released the information prematurely, I might add, but that said, this is where we are now. So, to be absolutely positively clear, the amendments that I proposed today, that's been posted on their website, do not weaken the Office of Inspector General. As the Office of Inspector General is currently seeking new powers, I think that's a very important distinction. The amendments I proposed strengthen the Office of Inspector General and provide some level of checks and balances and transparency to the office. I support the Office of Inspector General. However, I believe in transparency and, again, some level of accountability. Let's take a look at the issues at hand. Currently, the Office of Inspector General has access to all Baltimore County records, and what is being proposed is access to individuals' private information via subpoena. As proposed, no one needs to sign off on the subpoena, just the Office of Inspector General. I strongly believe there should always be some checks and balances to protect employees and all others' privacy, particularly against unreasonable searches of employees' private information. We're talking about some of the most sensitive information people can have. We're talking about their emails, their cell phone records, maybe their search history. Who knows how far it can go? Bank records? And I believe it flies in the face of the Constitution of the United States of America, which prohibits, the Fourth Amendment prohibits, unreasonable search and seizure of property from, by the government on its citizens. My recommendation, and I have heard from quite a few, and we're going to hear some people today and some organizations, my recommendation would simply require that a judge to sign off on a subpoena for private records of individuals, thus making sure that our brave police officers, firefighters, and every other employee of Baltimore County is afforded the same rights to their privacy as criminals. Police, the FBI, all of them, in order to get access to individual information, must stand in front of a judge and demonstrate probable cause. Unchecked power leads to issues later on. We all know power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. My recommendation also include an advisory board made up of various professionals in Baltimore County, and this is very important. All except for one do not work for Baltimore County. They would not be appointed to the board by anyone who works for Baltimore County. The board would have no authority to impede, stop, or alter any investigation or report. The advisory board that I recommend would not be able to discipline or fire the Inspector General. The board would basically observe and advise, but more importantly, strengthen the Office of Inspector General by providing additional expertise for the Office of Inspector General and a level of transparency. Similarly, it should be noted, Baltimore City has an advisory board, and Baltimore City Advisory Board has the power to hire and fire the Baltimore City Inspector General. This is not a foreign concept because other offices of Inspector General have similar To close out, to be absolutely clear, well, let's go to the other issue. The other issue at hand is an employee requesting reimbursement for legal fees that they had or for attorneys that they hired doing an investigation. It doesn't mean that they're entitled to it. It doesn't mean they're going to get it. It just provides for a mechanism for them to request it. I know a lot of conversation has been had about the example that I had gave about a young lady who hired an attorney, and the question was, did she need the attorney? Well, my answer to that, after giving it much thought, is sort of like me looking back in the last 20-some years and trying to decide whether or not I needed fire insurance for my home. I didn't have an issue. I didn't have a fire, but I'd be darned if I spend one day moving forward without it because I can't predict the future, and neither could this woman. I believe that everyone in county government should have some level of accountability. Government checks and balances are good and what help strengthen our government. In fact, these are the principles that this great country is founded on. This country is founded on three co-equal branches of government: checks and balances. And when we think about checks and balances for a minute, when we just think about checks and balances, everywhere in our society, there's checks and balances. Police officers, they have a civilian oversight board. Courts, you go to the district court. If you're not, if you feel like you don't like what happened in the district court, you can go to the circuit court. Then you can move on to the appellate court or the Court of Special Appeals. If you feel that a judge mistreated you or did not act properly, there is a part in the Special Appeals Division that deals with judges who act improperly. They can be reprimanded, all the way up to removed from the bench. And we just recently saw a congressman removed from Congress. Checks and balances. Even the President of the United States of America has to account for items or issues that people feel were improper. That's the beauty of America. We don't have any kings or queens. Everybody must account. So, why do I say all of these things? Because I believe, and believe me when I tell you, I get it. I get it. It's more sensationalism if you can somehow make this about me and the Inspector General. But as I have said repeatedly, I'm here trying to do the right thing for good government, trying to make sure that everyone that goes before the Office of Inspector General or investigated by the Office of Inspector General will walk away with a level of peace, knowing that it's not just one person controlling everything. When we think about information, information can be extremely dangerous if it leaks out to the wrong people. People have committed suicide because their private information was made public. So I take these things and these, and the principles that America is founded on very seriously. So, on that note, that's my statement, and what I'd like to do right now is call our first speaker. Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Keep turning my mic off. Ms. Rautson, good to see you. That was a lot. Anything in particular you want to particularly comment on or give you a chance to respond?
Sure. Thank you so much. I think the chairman commented on a lot of the themes that were taken up by the Blue Ribbon Commission, including transparency, accountability, access to records. That group really did dive deeply over a year to look at these recommendations and consider the entirety of our OIG code to make sure that these principles are deeply embedded within those sections, and then furthermore, they're added into the charter to make sure that this office can remain independent into the future, no matter who sits in these chairs. I appreciate the chairman's commentary, but specifically on some of these instances, the commission did consider these recommendations, and they advised against them, which is why they weren't included in the initial package of bills that was submitted to the council.
Not wanting to be redundant, but accountability was brought up a couple times. Could you talk a little bit about the accountability that's already built in and also present within the Office of the Inspector General?
Sure. And I will ask the Inspector General to clean up anything that I missed.
Sure, don't let me, yeah.
But, yeah, I'm happy to speak on that. So there's quite a few different accountability mechanisms that were built into this bill specifically that weren't in the statute before. One of them that was really important to the commission was around the Office of the Inspector General, the staff be included and considered employees of the county and make sure that they're subject to personnel laws of the county and that their practices and policies go through our Human Resources Department. There was a whole section of the commission recommendations that focused on the policies and procedures of the office themselves. So it's not included in the legislation that you see because there was a number of actions that took place outside of legislation, but one of them is that the Inspector General is required to complete written policies and procedures, and then those policies and procedures within the bill are required to be posted so they can be viewed by the public. So a lot of the questions around the procedures that are followed and the investigative mechanisms are published on her website now and are required to remain that way by the bill. And lastly, and I'll ask you to speak a little bit more about this, but in terms of oversight and accountability, there is a governing board of inspectors general that oversees the policies and practices of those groups, and in the past couple of months, that organization did complete a peer review of our inspector general and gave feedback on her internal policies and procedures and the way those investigations are managed. And you can also see the outcomes of those peer reviews posted on her website. Those are also public.
Just to, I'm sure when she comes up, I can ask the same question.
Sure.
Those were finished, or at least one was finished, in mid-October?
Yes.
Gotcha. And any quick snapshot of what they came back with? Or just some of the?
Oh, the peer review.
Peer review, on my part.
I, I'll leave that to you, but I would say the peer review was positive, and the policies that were reviewed by the Association of Inspectors General did not find any egregious issues with the policies and practices, and I would say she passed with flying colors.
Understood. Thanks, Chairman.
Sure. I thank you for your line of questions. Let me see if I can get this right. There you go. So I have a couple of questions. And listen, I appreciate the work that the Blue Ribbon Commission did. After all, it should be noted that it was chaired by a retired inspector general. And how many police officers, firefighters, or teachers was on that board?
I'm not clear on the membership of those members, but I do, I can tell you that the membership of that group was truly thought leaders in investigations and others, inspector generals from different levels of government, judges, respected lawyers throughout Maryland. It was a pretty wide array of backgrounds on that group with legal expertise.
Okay, I was, I suspect the answer was no or none, but I was talking of the Blue Ribbon Commission. There was no police, firefighters. In fact, there was no union leaders or anybody there to represent the interests of the employees. That's what I was getting at. And in some ways, we talk about sort of like the fox guarding the hen house, and when we get group think, we know what we're going to get in terms of response. That said, I appreciate the work they did. They did what they were asked to do, but to be absolutely clear, there's a system in checks and balances, which is why we're sitting here today to be able to do our jobs, which is to listen to the recommendations and put forth additional changes if necessary. And that's what I'm doing. I take my job extremely serious. That said, if you have any more comments or questions, so I can, anybody else have any questions, so I can get to the speakers? I know we have quite a few. Councilman Motoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my office has received upwards of 100 correspondence related to the amendments, and all of them, with the exception of one, asked that we not support the amendments and pass the legislation as submitted. And so it makes, and I think other council offices have received the same level of correspondence. So it begs the question of how did the amendments get formed? And you did say this evening that it was stakeholders that helped you form the amendments. In previous answers to that question that I've seen in different interviews, it was indicated that council members helped you form the amendments. And I know, I can say clearly that I was not one of those members that helped you form the amendments, and in discussions I've had with other colleagues, I think there were stakeholders that may have helped you form the amendments, but I'm not sure of any council members being part of that stakeholder group. And I don't know if you wanted to clarify on that.
Well, I was very clear with what I said, and I appreciate you telling me what I know, but I think I'm very capable of knowing what I know, and I thank you very much. I stand by my statement.
And I have one other question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So in the new, in the latest version of the amendments, there are different groups that are identified as part of the advisory group. One is Morgan State University, another is a member of the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, the ACLU, or American Civil Liberties Union, the University of Baltimore School of Law, and the University of Maryland School of Law. So those are very specific organizations. They're not like a member of academia or a member of a union or some more broad pool of candidates. So I guess my question is, did you or any members of the council staff, maybe the secretary, because I think we all know that this topic is a flashpoint, did any of these organizations that are identified as potential members of the work group, have we reached out to them to say, are you interested in being part of this work group? Or are we going to do, will we do that after the fact if this legislation should pass? Or if the amendments should pass, I should say.
Well, if the amendment should pass, I would imagine we will, I'm not 100% sure, but I imagine we'll reach out to them, and if there's an issue, we'll take care of it at that time.
So we haven't proactively, haven't had a conversation with them about whether they would be interested. Because they're so finite, I worry that we may not get a candidate from these various organizations to serve in an advisory group that's become such a flashpoint.
Are you going to vote for the amendment?
I don't think so. No, I'm not going to vote for the amendment.
And don't worry about it.
Okay. I will not vote for the amendment. Thank you.
Good. Any additional questions or comments from the members? All right, we will go to the speakers. Thank you, Ms. Rautson. Yes, first speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is David Riley. Mr. Riley is here in person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is David Riley, and I've been a Towson resident for 43 years. In a perfect world, offices- Towson resident for 43 years. In a perfect world, offices of the IG throughout the entire country should serve as a watchdog of the people, making sure that government functions in a fair, honest, and efficient manner. But sometimes in the reality, watchdogs can easily turn into attack dogs if they're ever compromised by personal animosity or political agendas. Unfortunately, I have firsthand knowledge of the need, the strong need for checks and balances in this situation. As a federal employee in DOD, I was once the target of an IG investigation brought on exclusively due to the fact that I was loyal to a senior executive who was on the losing side of a inner belt, excuse me, inner beltway power structure. I was fortunate that an outside agency stepped in to kill the investigation and clear my name. But unfortunately, you know, it was a very trying time for myself and other staff officers. The point is, checks and balances are needed. You can't just assume that the mission is noble, that the individuals involved with this in the future will not be compromised, as anybody can be compromised. As a rank-and-file member of DOD, the thought that I would have to hire my own attorney to combat a, what was at the time, a vindictive IG investigation was very frightening. What attracted me to this conversation was the ability that regular, rank-and-file employees would have the option of trying to get reimbursement if they incurred legal expenses. And that's, you know, that's something that would be very attractive and fair to the average person, whether it's a county law clerk, a fire person, a code inspector. So my thoughts are, there are several very good points here in these amendments, and I would like for you to please consider them. As far as the advisory board, I don't have a large trust of government investigative bodies, whether at the federal level, state level, or county level. No offense to anybody who's taken to that now. But an additional advisory board in this day and age, to me, is something that should be certainly considered. Having said that, I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Riley. Next speaker, Ms. Belcaster.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Dave Rose, who is here in person.
Good evening, Mr. Rose, and thank you so much for joining us today.
Been president again of this organization for about three hours now, so...
Congratulations.
So 2:15 this afternoon. This is my first assignment.
Well, for those that don't know, Mr. Rose has just been re-elected to the president of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Four.
I had it before, done it again. So we'll see. I have a letter and then some clarifying statements.
Yes.
This letter was written with some of my consultation with the former president, who's just outgoing. I'll read it and then make my comments. It says, "I am writing on behalf of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Four, which represents over 3,200 active and retired Baltimore County police officers. FOP Lodge Four is opposed to language found in pending Baltimore County Legislation Bill 84-23. The language amends Baltimore County Code 3-14-107 by inserting the following. Two, the Office of the Inspector General may issue a subpoena for production of documents that are not maintained by Baltimore County and that are not within the possession, custody, or control of a county employee at any time during the investigative process." I just wrote my letter. So I write, "The privacy is fundamental. The bill infringes upon that privacy. There is no oversight, and therefore it is ripe for abuse. The Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution protects people from government overreach in their personal lives." It says "I," but it's actually "we." "Ask that if council is considering increasing the authority of the Inspector General, that it be done with judicial oversight. As police officers, we know the value of having judicial review to all of our search and seizure warrants. The same should apply to the Office of Inspector General of Baltimore County. Thank you for your consideration in this matter." Personally, I haven't been involved in the politics of this. I have been out of the fray, recently not even in Maryland. I came back yesterday. I've worked with the Inspector General in her office before, and I found them to be very, very accommodating, inquisitive, polite, and helpful. And this is by no means any slate on that office or the Inspector General. But I've been in this county for almost 37 years, and I've seen what almost unfettered power can give somebody and what harm can be done by having that unfair to power. And I don't know of anybody else that would be able to just have the authority to issue subpoenas for employees' personal records or how that would interfere with a parallel Internal Affairs investigation or investigation by the Police Accountability Board.
You can keep going, Mr. Riley.
So I do think that if somebody has an investigation, or the Inspector General's office has an investigation against one of our members or any county employee, do your investigation. Nobody's saying you can't investigate. Investigate fully to the best of your ability, and we appreciate the outcome. But when it comes to getting into people's personal lives and records, why should it be any different than us and have judicial oversight? That's kind of where we are.
Well, I really appreciate you coming in and sharing your comments with us.
For the record, this is the first time I've spoken to the Councilman Jones. We've had no conversation over this at all.
Absolutely. But congratulations and thank you so much. And I can't agree more. And one of the things you said, and I guess think is so important, and maybe I did not mention it, this is as no reflection on our current inspector general. This is about process and oversight and transparency for today, tomorrow, and forever.
As a county employee, I found her office to be fantastically and very helpful, fantastic and very helpful. I was very thankful for any assistance her office could provide.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. Next speaker, Ms. Belcaster.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Whitney Dudley, who is here in person.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I think my perspective will be a little bit different than what I've heard so far. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I am here to express opposition to the amendments of 8323 and 8423. I also want to thank Councilman Urteil, Councilman Catch, and Councilman Potoka for responding to my email. An oversight committee is a blatant tactic to thwart and stifle the ability to expose wrongdoing by upper-level management, directors, bureau chiefs, department heads, et cetera. An example would be the exposure of the paving of a private alley at the direction of a county administrator. Several county employees expressed concerns and highlighted the misstep of this action, and they were silenced. The maintenance of such alley is now the responsibility of Baltimore County government at the taxpayers' expense. One of the most valuable assets Baltimore County government has are its employees. Employees are the stewards to ensure that policies and procedures, legislation, and sometimes law are adhered to. Baltimore County employees take this responsibility seriously and do their best to uphold high standards. Too often, conscientious employees who express concerns are faced with intimidation, threats by superiors, and retaliation. As a retiree of Baltimore County government, I have not only witnessed this, but I've been a victim myself. The Office of the Inspector General has provided an avenue for the stewards of Baltimore County government to express concerns that are, and it's an unbiased and safe environment. The Office of the Inspector General takes all concerns seriously and does their best to research and validate. It is imperative that if the administration strives for a fair, transparent, and functioning Baltimore County, the Office of the Inspector General should have access to all documentation, not subject to review or restriction, to ensure that waste, fraud, and improprieties are held at bay. As a Baltimore County taxpaying citizen, please give the Office of the Inspector General the tools they need to ensure Baltimore County can be the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dudley. Thank you for coming in and sharing your thoughts with us. Next speaker, Ms. Belcaster.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Rose Kinder. Ms. Kinder, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and/or turn on your camera if you prefer.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I'm speaking in support of the Office of the Inspector General, or OIG, and the passage of clean, unamended versions of Bills 8323 and 8423. In 2022, when the Blue Ribbon Commission on Ethics and Accountability met behind closed doors with Councilmember Jones, I imagine that Mr. Jones freely aired his opinions and grievances about our OIG. I urge you to reject Mr. Jones's attempt to create this ill-advised so-called Advisory Board, which as written, should be named the Censor Board. In addition, Mr. Jones has offered up an amendment to financially encumber the county for legal expenses for county employees who feel the need to retain legal counsel when participating in OIG investigations. What in the world is this? Attorneys must be salivating at this notice. Seriously, get a grip, council members. When a county employee has to answer questions about their jobs as a part of their jobs on work time, no, we should not be paying for an attorney for them. If they have anxiety about that, that's a separate issue. Mr. Jones, I have appreciated some of your work in our Baltimore County community. I don't know what is behind your attempts to restrain the OIG, but your effort has been sustained, egregious, and damaging to your reputation. In closing, I ask the council members to please reject all of Mr. Jones's amendments to the OIG bills. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kinder. We appreciate you calling in and appreciate your comments. Next speaker, Ms. Belcaster.
One moment, Mr. Chair. I was having a difficulty with the timer. Our next speaker is Isabel Cummings, who is here in person.
Ms. Cummings, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good.
I was here in 1978 as a page, pretending to be one of you. Now I'm the real inspector general, but... Thank you for having me.
Sure.
Do I get to see the time? Do I know how much time? Or do I, is there a time limit?
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
If you need more, we'll give you a little more.
Thank you. The Office of the Inspector General works for the taxpayers of the jurisdiction that it is in. They are the voters' independent watchdog. As inspector general, our duty is to seek the truth with an objective mind, without interference, and without prejudice, and regardless of the politics. My name is Isabel Mercedes Cummings, and I am the first Vice President of the National Association of Inspectors General. I am also the fifth Inspector General of Baltimore City. The Office of Inspector General in the city has existed since 2005, but the office was not effective for many years because it lacked the most important pillar of an inspector general: independence. Since establishing independence in 2018, the office has identified wastes and abuse of over $33 million for the citizens of Baltimore. Here in Baltimore County was recognized that such an office is needed. It was established in January 2020 by the county executive. The growing pains were real, and quickly, a diverse Blue Ribbon Panel was established. This esteemed group spent months interviewing subject matter experts, forming and establishing OIGs in best practices. And in the end, they published a report that was over 100 pages at a cost of $100,000 of taxpayer money. As the Blue Ribbon Commission member, Joey Ann Antron, said recently, "These amendments are a slap in the face to the Blue Ribbon Commission." The report clearly stated that an advisory board is not best practices for an OIG office. I'm here to report that 85% of all inspector generals do not have advisory boards. The remaining 15%, which I am one, that do have advisory board, not one has an advisory board that will edit a report. That concept is against everything that an independent office of the inspector general would stand for. It is without precedent, and it is without logic. My advisory board does not see my reports. My advisory board does not know what investigations I am doing. They have three purposes. One, to help me with my budget, to make sure it isn't ever cut by the legislature. Two, to select the next inspector general. And three, if there are any instances of misconduct, they will handle that independently. The Association of Inspector Generals conducts peer reviews of the IG's offices throughout the country using Green Book standards. This amendment would cause Baltimore County to be in violation from the start. Best practices is that inspector generals have subpoena power. The Blue Ribbon Panel agreed unanimously on this concept. Here in Baltimore County, the auditor has subpoena power. But these amendments would mean the inspector general would have to go to a judge to get a subpoena. This is unheard of in the industry. Inspector generals must have the ability to do independent investigations of people without retribution, like all these amendments seem to be. Reimbursing employee expenses during an investigation is equally unheard of. This would result in a tremendous waste of taxpayer monies. The Blue Ribbon Commission panel was correct in their recommendations, and I urge this group to ignore these amendments and to see them for what they are. It is these amendments that is the sole source of me sitting here before you, asking you to let the people's watchdog do her job without obstruction and interference. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them.
Yes, I could not help but... So you do have an advisory board in Baltimore City?
Yes, I do.
And the advisory board can hire and fire you?
They can only fire me for three reasons, and they're outlined in the law as well.
Okay.
They independently hire the inspector general so that it has not become a political position, so that the, you know, they're independent citizens from the city of Baltimore.
Okay, so you said that they could work to increase your budget, but the reality is, as written in the Charter, don't they recommend your budget?
Yeah, we've already, we've already gone through and done that, yes.
Okay, so they can recommend any amount they want?
Right now, we're recommending 2.6 million. I think Ms. Madigan only has about 600,000, and you are a bigger jurisdiction.
Okay, so lastly, you do, are you, do you consider yourself a very nice inspector general, competent, and do a great job?
I do my job.
Okay, but you're able to do it with an advisory board. Would you think that that advisory board has more power than the one that's being proposed?
I have, my advisory board has never reviewed any of my investigations, ever. My advisory board... My Advisory Board works with my budget, and they work on my review. That's it. They have no idea what investigations my office is doing. That is a pillar of independence.
So...
And that is why 85% of Inspector Generals in the United States of America do not have Advisory Boards.
Okay, so one last thing, since you put that up. The members of the Advisory Board in Baltimore City, there's a process, but many of the members start from being nominated by elected officials. Is that correct?
What they ended up doing is they submit, they submit names to the different, we have 14 council people, they submit the names, and then they're independently selected in a bowl by the head of the Ethics, the Ethics Director.
But those members were ultimately selected by elected officials?
No, we actually put an outreach to citizens to submit your application to the OIG to become a member of the Board. We then divide it up among the different jurisdictions and send it to the electeds. We then get the names back there, then put in a bowl, and they're, the six are selected by the Ethics Director.
Okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
As I understand it, every council member puts in a name, then you pair them off into two, then one of those will move forward, then eventually, it's a random selection and you pick them. But ultimately, the people sitting on the Advisory Board in the city came from some council member, and then there are some others.
Well, they came from their ability to apply, because they themselves made the decision to apply to be on the Advisory Board. It did not come from an elected official, because there's an application that has to be filled out. The citizen had to take the step to want to be on the Office of Inspector General Advisory Board.
But they're nominated, they're put forth, they're put in consideration by the council members?
Only of the, the names that were submitted. So instance, if you had a friend that, you know, someone on your campaign that wanted to be on this board, they would have had to go through the entire process.
Right. Thank you very much. I guess, when I think about Advisory Boards, I think about Baltimore City's Advisory Board. I think about the recommendation that the County Executive put forth here in Baltimore County in 2021 for an Oversight Board. And then, when I think about what is being put forth today, this Advisory Board truly is an Advisory Board with very little teeth, if you will. And as it relates to editing a report, to be clear, the Advisory Board would look at the report when it's completed, they can accept it as it is, or they can recommend a change, because there will be experts on the Advisory Board that may be able to offer some additional information. And nothing requires that the Inspector General change the report, it's just a recommendation.
I couldn't disagree with you more, sir.
You dispute what it says, or you dispute the merits of it?
Well, I dispute, actually. The part dealing with the review of what the Advisory Board can do with the Inspector General's report is actually shocking. It's almost a page of different editing, review, you know, recommend, it's unheard of. And honestly, in the Office of the Inspector General, when I even mentioned this to the Executive Board of the Association, that was truly one of the most shocking. To think that a group of people that haven't been trained, don't know the entire case, don't have all the evidence in front of them, would be editing a report, I mean, that is unheard of.
Again, you know, I'm not really sure if you're trying to intentionally mislead people, but the report says what's being proposed is that they can approve a report as they see it, or they can make a recommendation for a change. And nowhere does it say that they have a right to edit it. The Inspector General would always have the right to continue the course. Now, you say you disagree, I understand, but...
In a way, it's a stall tactic to not get the report out, because once an OIG report goes out, it goes to the action holder who has the ability to respond, and all of that is published. I mean, there is a process that has been established by Inspector Generals everywhere. This is unheard of.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cummings.
Of course.
Next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Kelly Madigan, who is here in person.
Ms. Madigan, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Oh, doing wonderful.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a statement to make. I received these amendments when everyone else on the council received them. And I don't know if many of you know, but I was an auditor for the county school system and know a little bit about what this office does, because there's some similarities between us and the Audit Office and the Inspector General. So when I got the amendments, I read through them, and I'm thinking of the way we operated in the Audit Office, and I'm certain that you operate the same way, and let's say, in the way of reports, you don't issue it until a lot of people in the office actually take a look at it and check it, et cetera, et cetera. We did that as well, and we had no bars to anything that we needed to do in order to complete this report. So I'm the one that sent the amendments to our OIG, because I was interested in her response to them, her reaction to it, and so that's why I sent them. And I just rely on her expert opinion, and I, so I just wanted everyone to know that. And I am a big believer in openness in government, openness and transparency, and that is why I sent the amendments to her. And we talked about them, you know, et cetera, so just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Madigan?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Before I begin, I would like to thank the numerous emails and phone calls that our office has received from members of the public and county employees, expressing their overwhelming support for the office and these bills. It is, it's much appreciated. So I had some prepared remarks that I was going to say, but based on some of the questions, I think it may make more sense to dig into some of the topic. It's certainly already been stated that the Blue Ribbon Commission undertook all of this work, and I think their work was critical, and it was very important. And I went on the website prior to, earlier this afternoon, because this office is not the first Inspector General office that was ever created. There's a model, there's a formula, and when I started, it was very important to me, as I was creating a brand-new office, that it have credibility. And one of the ways that the office has credibility is to be a member of a larger association and to do things according to the book, according to the policies, and according to procedures. So I quickly became a certified member of that organization. I took a week-long course, I took a 100-question test. When drafting our policies and procedures, the first line of our policies and procedures, which are available on our website, states that we follow the Green Book, we follow the Association of Inspectors General and their Green Book, which is the parameters, the guidelines for conducting investigations. So during these nearly two years, there were a variety of ideas that were presented before the Commission. The Commission took, they had 11 public meetings, they had private meetings as well. They took testimony from at least five members of the Inspector General community, along with other members of the public. And I assume that they took the good, the bad, and the ugly. They took the concerns, they took the things that people were expressing, and they synthesized it into a 100-page report. And that 100-page report, I am very pleased that they recognized the hard work that the office was doing. They made no recommendations to make any substantive changes to what we were doing. They recognized that we were operating under best practices. They had some suggestions for the office, which we undertook immediately. I think the report came out in February, and one of the suggestions about having the policies and procedures online, as well as Garrity rights and other type of administrative rights, were immediately put on our website in late February of 2022, early March. So I want to say very clearly that I oppose all of these amendments. I disagree with you, Mr. Chair. These amendments do not strengthen the office. These amendments are not part of the hard work of the Commission. And as one Commission member recently said, she viewed the amendments as a slap in the face to the hard work by the Commission. So the first thing I want to just be really clear about this, subpoenas. We are talking about administrative subpoenas. When you are mentioning police officers and firemen, those are search warrants, those are not subpoenas. Search warrants have to be approved by a judge. Those are for content of text messages, unreasonable searches, and seizures under the Fourth Amendment. That is not an administrative subpoena. I want to read Section 1008 of the Charter that says subpoena power. "The county council, the county executive, the county administrative officer, the Personnel and Salary Advisory Board, the County Board of Appeals, the county auditor, and other agencies of the county may be so empowered by legislative act of county council or otherwise by law, shall have the power to administer oaths, to compel the attendance of witnesses, and to require the production of records and other materials in connection with any investigation, inquiry, or hearing authorized by this charter or by law." That's an administrative subpoena. This body has it, Ms. Rogers has it, and Ms. Smelkinson has it. There's no requirement that that go before a judicial officer. I would also like to submit, as part of my testimony, I took the liberty of printing out statutes from my sister jurisdictions, Montgomery County and Baltimore City, both of whom also have subpoena power, both of whom do not have any requirements on the subpoena power and are not required to go before a judge. I will not read them aloud, but I would like to submit them, along with Section 1008 of the Charter. I also took the liberty of printing out the model legislation as proposed by the Association of Inspectors General, which is on their website. They have drafted it for young offices to use as a model. And with respect to subpoena power, the model legislation simply states, "The authority to subpoena witnesses, administer oaths or affirmations, take testimony, and compel the production of such books, papers, records, and documents, including electronic data, as is deemed to be relevant to any inquiry or investigation undertaken pursuant to this writing." This is what we're talking about. I disagree with this idea that an Inspector General is running loose and issuing subpoenas. That is not true. In fact, it's false. We receive complaints, we vet those complaints. If the complaint is not related to Baltimore County Government, Baltimore County monies, Baltimore County employees, and/or fraud, waste, abuse, efficiency, integrity, and accountability, my office does not handle that complaint. But we vet the complaints, and where appropriate, it is appropriate to have subpoena authority. I also disagree with you, Mr. Chair, when you indicated that this is a new power. It is, in fact, not a new power. It was a power that the office always had, and the Commission merely recommended that the language be clarified. As you correctly stated, the office has direct, full, and unrestricted access to all records. The office would never need to subpoena a county document. The fact that the subpoena language was included in the first draft bill implies that the office would subpoena outside entities. For example, nobody's personal information, potentially a company, a vendor, that would have a contract with Baltimore County, potentially other areas that would be relevant to the inquiry. If a subpoena was issued to, for example, ABC Contracting, Inc., and ABC Contracting, Inc., in their judgment, did not want to comply with that subpoena, then they would go before a judicial judge to say that this doesn't meet the definition of fraud, waste, and abuse. It would happen at the back end, not the front end. With all due respect, most judges would not have the time to be considering subpoenas that were being issued, not being contended with. Councilman Young, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about accountability. Our office has lots of different ways that we are accountable. I certainly recognize that the work of the office by its very nature is confidential, but there are a number of fail-safe mechanisms that are already in place and that this bill merely sometimes seeks to enhance. The first accountability mechanism is that the office is required to produce an annual report. No other agency in Baltimore County produces an annual report. In that annual report, we talk about the number of complaints we receive, the different sources of those investigations, how many investigations we opened, who the source of the complaint. We try as best as possible to show the work of the office. It's really difficult to answer this, to answer the question of accountability, because so much of what we do is, in fact, by its very nature confidential, but to the extent the annual report we can do that, we certainly try. Every single report that we write, we get a complaint, we vet the complaint, we write a report, and then that report goes to either the administration, Ms. Rogers, or to the council for their response. I cannot publish any report without the response from either the county executive, the department head is also included, as well as the county attorney, or the chair, or county council. That's part of the accountability right there, and that is frankly consistent with every other Inspector General office, as well as federal IGs. I'm not issuing the report, I'm presenting the report to the stakeholder for them to have an opportunity to respond. We are also subject to peer review. I recently underwent a peer review, which is someone from the Association, who I don't know, comes into the office, they look through our files, they look through closed complaints, open complaints, closed investigations, open investigations, they interview all of our staff, they study the policies and procedures to ensure that we are in compliance with the Green Book. I'm pleased to say that we passed with flying colors, but they did have some suggestions. One of their suggestions was that we have a social media presence, you know, before, prior to that review, we didn't have one. I then published both the management letter, as well as the suggestion compliance letter on the website. Looking at my notes, I wanted to talk about this Advisory Board. You can call it whatever you want, an Advisory Board, an Oversight Board. I don't support it, it's not consistent with best practices, it's an infringement on independence. It's not within the Inspector General community to tell anyone that they're opening an investigation.
You can wrap it up. Go ahead, keep going.
This language, and I want to read the language so that we're clear. "This board shall receive notifications of the opening of an investigation from the office." That's not helpful, that's not consistent with independence, that's not a best practice. "Receive draft reports," that's also not consistent, that's not a best practice. That's not a best practice. This whole idea of an advisory board was brought before the Commission. There was lots of discussion about it. I testified about it publicly, as well as the subject matter experts, and it's not uniformly accepted within the Inspector General community. I see that I'm out of time. I had some other things to say, but I'm happy to answer questions, and I would like these documents to be submitted as part of my testimony.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Madigan. I did have one statement and maybe a question. Number one, we keep hearing about best practices, but those are best practices for Inspector Generals, maybe not so much for the employees. Now, I guess my question is, is there any scenario, or is there any board or commission that you think the makeup of which would be acceptable to you to provide a level of transparency and accountability where people that may feel otherwise would be happy? Is there any scenario?
I guess I have to understand a little bit more what you're trying to accomplish with the board. If you're looking for someone to file complaints about me, they can certainly go to the Office of Human Resources. I'm a county employee, no different than any other employee. The board that you have proposed here is one that is supposed to do my performance review, review policies and procedures, get a notification of it. To me, it doesn't matter what the composition of the board that you have proposed here. I disagree, and it's not, it's not just me saying this, Mr. Chair. It's best practices. It's the Blue Ribbon Commission. It's the Association of Inspectors General. I worked for nearly two years closely with the administration to support that commission. I testified before it publicly three times. I provided a lot of data to them. It was a lot of time and effort. I listened to the concerns, I answered them. I then worked closely with the administration to come up with a bill that both the county executive and my Office support. And that is, is Bills 8323 and 8423. So your advisory board is proposed in your amendments. It wouldn't matter what the composition is, because the actions of the board are not consistent with best practices.
Thank you very much.
I didn't get a chance to talk about the employee reimbursement, and I would like to if I could.
If you can be brief, because we have an awful lot of callers behind you, I mean, people that want to testify, and we want to be respectful of their times as well. So if you can wrap that up really fast.
I'll be brief. You are, in this amendment, you are creating a right to counsel where one doesn't exist. It would be a conflict of interest for the county attorney to weigh in on all of these. By its very nature, if someone is a subject of an investigation, not just a witness, and they on their own accord hire counsel, the county attorney is going to have a conflict. They couldn't represent them anyways. And it's, you are creating a right to counsel where one doesn't exist. I have not found a single office, and I have researched this issue extensively, that has this situation. It's also frankly going to be very, very costly to the taxpayers. Thank you.
So to be very clear, the Commission took the issue up, and they recommended that if your office has a conflict of interest with the county attorney, that your office would be able to request
That's different.
Its own attorney.
That's not what you're talking about. You're talking about a lawyer for someone that is under an IG investigation. What the Blue Ribbon Commission found, this is very different, is that I am represented by the county attorney as a department within county government. If he had a conflict of interest, he couldn't represent me. That is different than me questioning him or any other employee as part of a routine investigation or complaint.
So just to be clear, because I think maybe there's some words that are being thrown The proposal is that an employee, just like your office, if there's a conflict of interest, your office would have an opportunity to request an attorney. That's written in the report. And what's been, and the Commission said, if I paraphrase it correctly, they understand all the issues why employees may hire an attorney. They understand all the things that can come as a result of report. But then at the end of the day, they recommended against an employee's ability to request reimbursement. There is no right to counsel here, it's just a request.
No, I just
And right now, in the county code, there's no mechanism for someone to bring forth that request. What I was proposing is that there in fact be an opportunity for someone to request reimbursement.
Well, and I disagree with that, and it's not consistent. And to be clear, and I'm happy to submit
What do you disagree with? The wording or the idea?
Well, you are not accurately representing what the Blue Ribbon Commission wrote, and I have it right here, and I'm going to submit this as part of my testimony. It's under "other," it's on page 10. "The Commission recommends against adopting a policy that would require the county to reimburse personal legal expenses incurred in connection with an Office of Inspector General investigation." I agree with the Blue Ribbon Commission's recommendation, and I disagree and oppose your amendments, because they are not consistent with best practice. And I would like these summary of the Blue Ribbon Commission's recommendations to also be submitted as part of my testimony. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Madigan, I guess what's lost in that statement you guys read is the word "request." And maybe, I mean, I'm saying "request." I've said it, I don't know how many times.
I disagree with you. This discussion, I was part of this discussion, it was brought, it was discussed amongst many people. It was brought up in numerous meetings. They disagree with whether you request or whether there's a policy. The only difference between what you're saying is the word "policy" versus the word "request." And I'm telling you that they considered this, and they disagree with it. And I support their recommendation, because it's not consistent with best practices.
So is there a difference between the policy of paying for attorney fees and the ability for someone to request payment?
Well, under what theory would they request the payment? There would have to be some type of mechanism to make the request.
Well, at the end of the day, the request would go to the county attorney, the county executive, and then the county council. And then those individuals would determine whether or not the request was valid or not. No one says anybody's entitled to anything.
I guess we'll just have to respectfully all agree to disagree.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Ms. Belkaster.
Chair, I have one quick question for
One second.
Ms. Madigan. Hi, Ms. Madigan. Thank you for being here today.
Yes.
We had one technical amendment about Section 712 in the code.
I saw that, yes.
Did you see that one? Can you speak to that?
Sure.
So just to, let me give a quick, 712 basically address, and Mr. Secretary, if you need to correct me if I go astray here. But basically, 712 says, the essence of it is, is if a department takes a grant or a gift that's, I believe, above $25,000, that there's a public mechanism that comes through the county council, basically.
Yes.
That says, hey, we took Under Armour, we just had this happen with the fire department.
Yes.
Under Armour gave chairs to the fire department. And, you know, we feel that's a best practice in the sense that the public hears about it. So how do you feel about that particular amendment?
Well, I took some time to look at the amendments. I think you sent them to one of your constituents, and they forwarded them to me. And I saw that each of those amendments were, in fact, their own separate bills. So I'm now, right now, looking at Bill 3523, which talks about this. And so the five or so that were sent to me were their own separate bill. I would be more than happy to meet with you to consider this as its own separate bill. Because it was an amendment, I didn't have an opportunity to really look into the issue. If you, I'm not going to dispute what you're saying if it's a best practice, if it's something that the Office should do, but I'm opposed to it coming in this format, because it's being thrown in with a lot of other things. Councilman Ortel, I'd be more than happy to sit down and discuss that with you. This council has the opportunity, unlike the state legislature, that you meet every week and not just for a 90-day period. So I'd be more than happy to consider this. But to me, the bills that were submitted are the direct results of the Blue Ribbon Commission, and that's why I support those bills as they are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If I could, if I could ask the secretary to give us a little explanation of the two additional bills that were there, and how they, what the concerns are with those bills, if you don't mind.
The amendment, the amendment I think that Mr. Ortel referred to, the two, are really very technical budgetary-related amendments. It's on page six of Bill 83, which is the charter bill. And the second one is what I think Mr. Ortel was referring to. Currently, the law says that the Office may expend funds derived from private grants, the state, or the United States, to carry out its functions and activities. That's currently in the law. It's in statutory law in the county code. However, what is being proposed in Bill 83 is to place that, excuse me, place that provision in the county charter. And the county charter is what reigns supreme in Baltimore County and trumps statutory law. So if this is in the county charter, and all it says is "The Office may expend funds derived from private grants, the state, or the United States to carry out its functions and activities," it may, it can, it could be construed that this is at odds with Section 712 of the charter, which is essentially the supplemental appropriation charter provision that requires the county, and Mr. Reed can probably maybe explain this better than I can, or Ms. Smelkinson, but when the county receives monies, grant monies, or any private or public monies, in addition to the budget that was adopted before the end of the fiscal year for the next fiscal year, when we get monies in, that's when you have those current expense budget bills, which say, "We're accepting $1.5 million so that we can test more sexual assault kits." In order to do that, it has to come before the county council pursuant to Section 712 of the charter. So in order to make sure that we're crystal clear and consistent, so that we don't have any ambiguity, this amendment would just state that the Office's ability to expend funds derived from private grants, the state, or the United States to carry out its functions and activities would also be subject to that requirement in Section 712 of the charter, which are the ability for the county to receive funds, supplement its budget, and then spend those monies. That's basically it.
I guess I had one follow-up, though. I guess I just, I would prefer this to be its own separate bill, so I would have an opportunity to review it and have it go through the normal process. But the one under number two, the decrease to the budget, that one is actually a Blue Ribbon Commission recommendation. That language comes directly from the Blue Ribbon Commission, which is why I disagree with that amendment.
Right. And the Blue Ribbon Commission, I don't, I wasn't there, I wasn't on the Commission. So the Blue Ribbon Commission may not be exactly familiar with the county's charter-mandated budget process, but, and the way it was written in current law, again, to go back to current law, in the IG statute in the county code, it does say that a decrease in appropriations from the prior fiscal year shall be accompanied by a written justification for the decrease. So that can be done, because whenever the county executive puts out his budget, he does so in a budget message. Whenever the county council adopts the budget, they do so in a county budget message. So everything that is being done is discussed, and the justification, if you will, is put forward. So the county could abide by that current statute. The way this is written, any decrease in appropriations from the prior fiscal year in either, shall be accompanied by a written justification for the decrease, which shall publicly be posted in time for public hearings on the budget to permit public comment and input on such reductions. When the county, the county gets its budget on April 15th from the administration, the county council. Then the county council has from April 15th until the end of the fiscal year, which is the end of May, to adopt a budget. Once the budget is adopted, that is what is appropriated, and there is no way for the county council to then have public hearings on that. That, I'm not trying to be flip, but that ship has sailed. So what makes the most sense in order to be compliant is when the, when there's a decrease in the Office's proposed budget from the prior fiscal year, which is that would be, which is that which would be contained in the administration's budget submitted to the council, there would have to be a justification, written justification for that decrease, and public posting in time for public hearings on the budget to permit public comment. Then, at the end of April, the county council holds its budget hearing so that the public can weigh in on the executive's proposed budget. And then, for the next month, the council holds budget hearings, including various county agencies, including potentially the Inspector General. And then there would be more public comment opportunity and public deliberate, not deliberation, but public input. And then, but it's, but then the council, at the very end of this process, then votes to appropriate or adopt that fiscal year's budget. So it is not really possible for the council to then have public hearings after that, so the public can weigh in on it, because it's done. So that's what the other budget item would do. They're both very technical, but they just take into account the county's spending process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boswick. To be clear, that's our subject matter expert, and he spoke extremely well, but I'm just going to summarize it. On the first example, it's contradictory with the county code. So to be clear, it's making reference, the amendment is to make reference to the other section of the county code, so that there not be any potential conflict. The second one that he mentioned, because of the timeline on the county code, there would be no time, because at the, at, what is it, June?
Oh, yeah. I believe we have to
After deliberation?
We have to adopt the budget at, before the end of the fiscal year for the next fiscal year.
So after deliberation, we have very little time to conduct a public hearing. But we would be willing to write a letter if that were to happen, if it were to happen. That's, that's all those two items were about. Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Belkaster, next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is virtual, and it is Janet Miller. Ms. Miller, you are online. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony, and turn your camera on if you prefer.
Okay, Ms. Miller, if you can hear us. We can't hear you. We will give you a couple of seconds.
She is, oh, wait a minute. She is unmuted right now. I'm not sure. Maybe she's having mic problems.
Okay, being
We can keep her on as a panelist to move on to the next speaker and see if
Please. And if, Ms. Miller, if you can fix your equipment, we'll be more than happy to hear from you.
Our next speaker is David, oh, we already have him.
No, Sharonda.
Sharonda Huffman, who is also on virtually. Oh, you're here in person.
Hello, Ms. Huffman. Thanks for coming in.
I came in. Sometimes you have technical difficulties. I wanted to make sure you saw me. My name is Sharonda Huffman. It is a pleasure to see you, Chairman Jones and the rest of the council. I am a resident of Essex Barreland, and I also am a former employee of I am a resident of Essex Barillon, and I also am a former employee of Baltimore City. The reason why I'm here is because I have personal experience where I was subject to a lot of different things going on in Baltimore City, and because of the inspector general, she was able to conduct investigations. I understand that our inspector general can only serve two terms, and the initial term is for five years, and the second one is for four. Based upon the fact that she does have term limits, if there was some kind of issues, those are things that can be remediated. Also, I just want to take issue, I have much respect for you, Chairman Jones. However, on Fox 45, you did say there were council members who had some of these recommendations. And I do believe that the council members can speak for themselves if they wanted any changes. And I do believe there has been many, many conversations about this bill. And you are expert in Robert's rules, and you did the right thing, if you, you know, technically. But for transparency, I think that we always should consider that when you keep pushing the can down the road, we'll never get anything done. I think she has done an excellent job. And sometimes, you know, as leaders, sometimes you're going to get criticized, you know, and you learn from your mistakes. But I don't think that we should have an inspector general who is limited on doing investigations. I do have to say, Ms. Coming has been, done an excellent job in eliminating waste. I think, hopefully, we don't have as many problems at Baltimore City, that's why I left. So I do urge this council to only accept those technical amendments, but everything else is not in compliance, and it will diminish the office. And I do appreciate your time, and I hope that everyone can stand on, you don't have to get bullied. And so, Councilman Patoka, I just wanted to say, you represent people, and you do have a right to ask questions. So when the council chair said, "If you're not voting for it, you don't have to worry about it," I disagree. We all are stakeholders, and we all need to have this information. So thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
Well, I thank you very much for coming in, and we appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Thomas Glancy. I do not see Mr. Glancy's knee. Oh, he's here in person. My apologies.
Thank you for providing me with this opportunity to speak. My name is Tom Glancy. I live in District 6, and it was my privilege to serve on the Blue Ribbon Commission on ethics and accountability. First, I would like to commend the council for establishing and properly funding the work of that commission, as well as granting the commission access to county officials and employees, other inspector generals, and to the nationally-recognized experts it needed to complete its work. The council then quite properly sought the input of, from the county executive and the inspector general in drafting the initial legislation. And the fruit of those labors was legislation that, while not incorporating all of the commission's recommendations, goes a long way towards safeguarding the independence of the IG and providing her with the tools she needs to carry out her mandate to root out fraud, waste, and abuse in county government. Unfortunately, that process appears to have come off the rails last week when amendments were introduced that would undermine the authority of the IG. That was apparently done without proper advance notice to the inspector general, the county executive, and to the citizens of Baltimore County that those amendments would be introduced. And if, and I realize it's a big if, if the reporting of the Baltimore Brew is to be believed, the introduction of these amendments followed a secret meeting of at least some council members to discuss the amendments in apparent violation of the Open Meetings Act. My allotted time does not permit me to critique each of the proposed amendments, so I will confine my remarks to the creation of what is called an advisory board, but which is, in reality, an oversight body. The composition and powers that would be conferred upon that board clearly violate best practices. First, a majority of the board members will be county officials and employees who themselves could fall within the jurisdiction of the IG. It plainly violates best practices to subject IG reports to a pre-review process conducted by individuals who may themselves have been or could be the subject of past, current, or future IG investigations. Can you imagine the IG being required to submit a proposed report for approval to the very person who is the subject of her investigation and report? Moreover, even if the board was properly constituted, requiring the preapproval of investigative, IG investigative reports by any outside body is, as far as I am aware, unprecedented, is certainly is ill-advised. Will the board have access, for example, will the board have access to the IG's underlying investigative files? If not, you will be asking it to approve or disapprove the reports on the basis of incomplete information. And if it does have access to that information, it opens a whole panoply of problems in terms of confidentiality and privacy concerns. And so for that reasons, I urge that the, that the council adopt the originally-introduced 83 and 84-23 and reject the amendments to those statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Glancy. Appreciate you coming in. I guess had one question, just to clarify. You mentioned the members of the advisory board would be subject to the inspector general's investigation. None of the members on the proposed advisory board would work for Baltimore County, only one, and that would be the director of the Ethics Commission.
Well, I mean, they would fall under her jurisdiction.
Under, no, they would not, I don't think they would fall under her jurisdiction. They would be professors from University of Maryland Law School, University of Baltimore Law School, a professor from Morgan State University, an attorney from Baltimore County.
Perhaps I was looking at a prior version of it, but I thought you included the county auditor and the county attorney and several other people that are subject to her jurisdiction. Were they removed?
Well, yes, and maybe no. The reality is, as I said before, there were no amendments introduced Monday. There was no amendments discussed. We didn't discuss any amendments Monday. What was released was probably what you're making reference to, but that, you know, was sort of like an infancy stage. It had not been fully vetted or discussed or developed, I should say. What's in front of us today has been and is being presented as amendments and discussed as such.
Okay, well, I mean, if, if no one subject her jurisdiction was included on the advisory board, would make it less objectionable, but my other objections would still, still stand in terms of it being improper to have her submit to anybody for preapproval of her reports.
And just to be clear, they would only be able to accept it or make recommendations. For example, there is one person on that would be recommended would be a fraud examiner, a certified fraud examiner. And somebody like that may be able to add some expertise or some suggestion or recommendation. Nothing proposed says that the inspector general would have to accept those recommendations, simply hear them.
And would they be making those recommendations based upon their ability to review the underlying files, or would they just look at the report itself and make their recommendations?
Well, I think the stat, the recommendation is that they would report the file, but I'm sure it will be in consultation with the inspector general.
Okay, well, if you give them access to those files, I mean, that really raises confidentiality and privacy concerns. And, I mean, what you're asking these people to do, I assume these are going to be unpaid volunteers, you're going to be asking them to spend dozens or maybe even hundreds of hours each year reviewing hundreds or thousands of pages of documents. I really question that you're going to be able to get people to agree to undertake that kind of a burden. And, and, you know, I, and I also don't think it's proper for them to be rifling through the underlying files.
Well, listen, I appreciate it very much, and I assure you, nobody cares about people's privacy as much as I do. And one of the things I just thought about, you know, we talk about administrative subpoena versus the other, they all result in access to people's personal information. But that said, thank you, Mr. Glancy. I appreciate you coming in and appreciate you, and thank you for your service on the commission.
And thank you for granting me this time to share my opinions. Thank you.
Absolutely. We appreciate it very much. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tom.
We're going to go back to Ms. Miller. I think she may be on, on, by phone as well, but let me try unmuting her again on here. Ms. Miller, are you there?
Um, wait a minute.
We can hear you. Ms. Miller?
Can you hear me on the phone?
Ms. Miller, you're going to have to either hang up the phone or disconnect on the device that you're using. You're on two devices, so that's, we're getting feedback. Are you there? Let me try one more trick I have in my pocket, Mr. Chair. Ms. Miller, are you there?
I am.
Ah, I picked the phone.
Thank you.
Well, okay, whenever you're ready to begin your testimony, you may begin.
Hi, Councilman Jones and members of the county council, I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I feel strongly that the amendments 83-23 and 84-23 should be voted against. They do not support independence of the inspector general's office. You've heard expert testimony, not just someone that thinks that it should happen. Having been an auditor and having to examine records, I know that that independence is critical. I think if you look back over some of the reports, it was mentioned earlier about the alley issue. If you look at Report 20-014, you had $1.1 million in waste. I'm still waiting for the county council to address the issues raised in 22-005, and please get a definition in the charter for residency therewith and the ability to execute and dismiss a county council person when they violate that. And I have not seen that, even though that report came out in November of 2020. It does need to be addressed. The other part is that Councilman Jones, you do discuss, or, I'm sorry, Chairperson Jones, you do discuss transparency. I, you mentioned that you had other county council members help you draft this, propose it. I would like those other county council members to speak up now, because they should also be willing to stand in front of their people they represent and say, "Yes, I want this part in, I want this part in," and not hide behind your skirt, so to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Ann George. Ms. George, you are on as a panelist. You may begin your testimony.
Good evening, councilmen. I'm here to speak against these amendments. And I think just in summary, we have the Association of Independent Investigative Generals, we have the CE who's against it, we have the Blue Ribbon Commission that, who's, did the study for this and doesn't recommend these things, because it violates best practice. I have serious concerns, again, about who among the council really supports these things and why this has been brought up. In many ways, Mr. Jones has had his own concerns with the IG in investigations, and it almost seems like a vendetta to bring these things back up now. And anyone on the council, I mean, if anybody should bring them up, and if other people were contributing on the council, members, they should have brought this. It is inappropriate for Mr. Jones. And we have yet again another example of possible malfeasance in that there was, associated with this was a meeting before the council meeting last week that violated the Open Meetings Act, and I'm very aware of these, this issue. So there is some conduct concerns here overall. I would like to commend my councilman, Catch, who spoke up and reported this to the IG and brought this thing to, to the light, and also the media, which has brought it to light. And I urge every councilman there to vote against this if it does come, if it's, the amendments are brought up next week. Perhaps they will be released and we don't get to that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. George. It's always good to hear from you. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our final speaker on this item, and I'm so sorry, because I'm probably not going to pronounce this correctly, is Iyeb Warku, who is here in person.
Hello, Mr. Warku. How are you?
Good, welcome.
Good, good.
Good evening, councilmen. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm an Owings Mills resident. I've lived in Baltimore County the last seven years or so. My family, we're originally from Ethiopia. I came here as an infant, and it's, it's not a country with a particularly strong sense of the rule of law. It's, my mom will frequently make jokes about just, you know, all the bribes she has to do to set up her business over there. But, and participating in the creation of law, being able to interact with your government officials, is just something that doesn't exist to the degree that it does in the United States. But when I see things like the council chair introducing amendments to a bill last minute that would interfere with his power in some way, I, it makes me wonder if the United States is really that different. And it's why I'm here today. I love this country. I love the integrity of our public officials, the transparency and openness in which laws and general, the general behavior of the government takes place. And I want to see that grow stronger over my life, not see it deteriorate. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate it. Well, we will now move on to, of course, we thank everybody for testifying, we thank everybody for hanging in there and sharing their opinions with us. Next, we're going to move on to page five, Bill 8623. Councilman Artel.
I would just say that we, this...
Microphone.
8623, I'll just be very brief. It was a bill about parking on lawns, which we are seeing more and more frequently, where people are just deciding to park on their lawns for no real reasons, although there are instances where people might park off the street because their car's been hit multiple times and they live on a secondary road. We are trying to work out some amendments that I don't... We are trying to work out some amendments that I don't know that we need to discuss here tonight, and that's not in a way that would jeopardize transparency. But Councilman Crandall and I had some, I don't know about disagreements, but some differences on this, so we're going to try to work those out and hopefully put in front of you a bill on Monday night that's, you know, acceptable to all. And I expect that there'll just be some minor technical amendments. So unless anybody has questions at this point, I think we'd all like to move on to the other bills at hand.
Thank you, Councilman Oertel. And why don't we, why don't we go with page 26, Bill 9423. Mr. Gutwold.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I ask, we have a large number of people from Pikesville to speak on the Pikesville Armory, and they've been here for quite some time.
Yes.
And I think we should, and sorry, Mr. Gutwold, but we've got a group of volunteers that are here and have been, you know, been patiently waiting. So if we could move to those folks, I would be appreciative.
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Gutwold to be extremely brief so that he not have to wait so long because I think, you think we can wrap this up in less than a couple of minutes?
All four.
All four of them. Okay. Why don't we, he said he think he can, but he's willing to wait. Okay, so why don't we move on to page 36, Bill 9823, and 98, are they companions?
We just have 9823.
Okay. You're 9923.
I'm 99.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill 9823, before I get into it, I just want to express my extreme appreciation to the good folks of Pikesville. We have a group of community leaders here that have been dedicated towards this issue, the Pikesville Armory, for a decade now, right? It's been that long. And back 10 years ago, this group that's going to speak now and has been so patient, they didn't have two dimes to rub together for the Pikesville Armory renovation. And over persistence and more persistence, they've gained over $15 million to move forward on the Pikesville Armory. So I want to thank, so that 15 million comes from the county, us, and I want to thank County Executive Olshewski for putting up at least a third of that. Also, the state of Maryland and the federal government. Senator Cardin was able to yield some resources for the project. And it's a great project for Baltimore County, and it's a spectacular transformative project for Pikesville. And so I'm really excited about it. I mean, we've been sitting through this for a while, so I'm trying to regenerate my excitement, and I hope that the speakers will also generate some excitement in their remarks because we're going to finish this meeting strong, aren't we, folks from Pikesville? All right. So what this bill does, 9823, we're talking about 14 acres in the heart of the Pikesville commercial area. And so within that 14 acres, it's currently zoned DR 5.5, which means that you can only do 5.5 dwelling units per acre. So Wade, you were a math, Councilman Catch, you were a math teacher. How many units would that yield? Okay, let's move on. It's 14 acres.
14 acres. Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven weighs this. Correct. Okay. So in any case, what we're trying to do is there's no, I'm very impressed. So there was a Pikesville Armory Commission that was established, I think, eight years ago. I've been involved in it, I guess, since I started running for office six and a half years ago, got to know everybody here, and we're going to hear from those folks. But what we have is this spectacular potential for 14 acres in the heart of Pikesville, is formerly the Pikesville Armory under the State Military Department. I'm not going to go into too much detail because I know Dave Ginsburg is going to go into really good detail about this. But it was transferred to the county for about a minute and then over to the Pikesville Armory Foundation. And what we want to do, because that zoning classification does not fit within the vision of the Armory Commission and subsequent community input meetings that have occurred, this will allow for us to create a central community hub in this 14 acres. And that central community hub is defined as a facility or group facilities situated on a single tract of land which provides a variety of commercial, civic, social, recreation activities meant to serve residents of the adjacent and surrounding communities. That's the folks that are here and their neighbors and even beyond, because I think this will be a regional destination place. A central community hub includes, but is not limited to retail, commercial recreational facilities, libraries, performance spaces, group childcare centers, senior centers, studios, vocational training spaces, offices, standard restaurants, breweries, nano breweries, and supporting parking. And I hope that John Lee and Fox 45 and Sun Papers is here all get this. This is a great story, the Pikesville Armory. So I'm going to stop right there and let some of the good folks that have been so patient speak, unless, Mr. Chair, you or any of the colleagues have any questions.
You know, we're very supportive of the Pikesville Armory. It's, as you said, a very transformative project, and let's get on with the speakers. First speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly. Our first speaker is David Ginsburg, who is here in person.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to defer and let Beth Rhinegold, for medical reasons, go immediately before me, please.
Okay. And as always, if someone says what you would say, feel free to say ditto, copy that, whatever, you know, or I can agree 100%. And Beth, it's always good to see you. How are you?
Good to see you, Chairman. I want to thank you and the council and all the good people waiting out there. I don't want to stand between anyone and the chicken tetrazzini that's waiting for me at home. My name is Beth Rhinegold. I'm the president and CEO of the Greater Baltimore Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to express on behalf of our chamber and our board our strong support for the proposed legislation, the Central Community Hub Bill 9823. As an organization dedicated to fostering growth economically and community development, we believe that this legislation is a crucial step towards revitalizing the Pikesville Armory and promoting the economic vitality of Pikesville. The Pikesville Armory holds a significant historical and cultural value for the region. The establishment of a central community hub, as outlined in the proposed legislation, aligns with the vision set forth by the Governor's Commission, aiming to transform the Armory into a multi-use venue for recreation arts and community programming. These efforts are in full alignment with the Pikesville Revitalization Action Plan approved by this very council. It's evident that the thoughtful vision of the Pikesville Armory cannot be fully realized within the existing zoning classifications. Therefore, we urge the county council to pass this proposed bill to create the necessary framework for the proposed central community hub. This amendment will pave the way for the transformation of the Armory into a dynamic space that serves the diverse needs of the community, fostering economic growth and cultural enrichment. We are grateful to Councilman Patoka for his work on this important piece of legislation and thank the county council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is David Ginsburg.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Patoka. I'm speaking as both the executive director of the foundation and as the chairman of the Joint Committee of the Veterans of the Pikesville Armory. Since its inception, the foundation has been dedicated to revitalizing Pikesville and the entire Northwest Corridor and building the community hub that the community wants and needs. The Governor's Commission was the first step at quantifying what did the community actually need. In 2023, as the foundation took over the property, we sought to validate the goals and what to build through a series of meetings. We had 17 presentations on the Armory to community groups in their own neighborhoods. We met with 44 groups or neighborhoods in the last year attending joint community presentations hosted at the Armory. We then had 28 different neighborhood groups and associations or nonprofits attend tours or presentations on the Armory to qualify exactly what the community needed to revitalize this area. And then we attended a number of different festivals and farmer markets. All of it was with the purpose of soliciting community feedback and validating what they needed. This will continue through 2024 and up until the day that we open this place in 2028, then transforming into how do we operate this and how do we continue to meet the community needs? We know what the community wants. We know what they need, and it can't be built under existing zoning regulations. The legislation proposed by Councilman Patoka is the only way that can meet the needs and wants of the community because of the limitations of the existing zoning regulations, especially concerning the RTA and the numerous historical easements on the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ginsburg. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Shelley Morheim.
Ms. Morheim, it's always a pleasure. Thank you. Yes, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank, thanks to all of you. I'm Shelley Morheim. I'm the president and one of the founders of the Pikesville Armory Foundation. As has been said, we have a history that goes back to the Governor's Commission, appointed by Governor Hogan. And out of that commission came this unanimous vision for what the Armory could be, that it could be this once in a generation opportunity to transform not just Pikesville, but the whole Northwest Corridor, Baltimore City and County. It's a really exciting, fantastic project that's huge, and we are chipping away at it. And as Councilman Patoka said, we've been very fortunate in getting funding from the state, the county, and the federal government, and both under Governor Hogan's administration and now under Governor Moore's administration as well. I just wanted, so obviously, we are very much in favor of this. As David said, this legislation is absolutely critical to being able to make this vision a reality. And I just wanted to say that what, the foundation itself came out of five groups that were part of the Governor's Commission, but that saw that by working together was the way that we were going to be able to make this happen. And that was the Veterans of the Pikesville Armory, the Thousand Friends of Pikesville, the Greater Pikesville Recreation Council, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Boys and Girls Clubs. So all of these groups will have a presence there, as well as many others that have joined this great community effort. So we thank you, Councilman Patoka, for putting in the legislation, and we urge your passage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in, and thank you for hanging in there. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Hello, thank you. Good evening. My name is Kristin Zaminsky. I am the president of Colonial Village, which is one of the adjacent neighborhoods to the Pikesville Armory. I am in full support of this legislation to change the rezoning. The Pikesville Armory transformation is going to be impressive and amazing, and as a mother to a toddler, I am so excited that something that will be intergenerational for every person of the family, regardless of age, will be so close and walkable. I love living in Baltimore County, and I think this will be such a boon and a great asset to the county, to bring in young families as well to something like this, is what we want. We want to encourage young families to move here, and this will be the thing that does it. I am so excited that I have this in literally my backyard. So thank you again. I fully support this, and I'm so excited. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in, and thank you for being, thank you for your patience. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Tom Feketti. Feketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I on?
No, you're good. You're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I said, this is a good afternoon, but I'm going to change that good evening. My name is Tom Feketa. I am the chair of the Pikesville Revitalization Action Plan Committee and a resident of the beautiful Second District. The committee, we call it PrAP, was created in 2021 when the full revitalization action plan was adopted by the council. The committee's role is to support the proactive management of the goals outlined in the plan and provide project consensus. The development of the former Pikesville Armory property under the leadership of the Pikesville Armory Foundation in a manner aligned with the vision expressed in the Governor's Commission report is the linchpin for the renewal of the Pikesville Central District and surrounding area. The proposed central community hub designation will enable this exciting project to become a unique mixture of green space, community center, library, athletic fields, playgrounds, performance spaces, artist galleries, public artwork, and small businesses. The imagined Armory Park will provide a resource for the entire community and will serve as an anchor attraction to draw people to Pikesville, enabling the development of a more dynamic central business district. We appreciate the opportunity to work in partnership with Councilman Patoka, the Armory Foundation, and the local neighborhoods to transform this incredible, complex, and visionary concept into reality and are looking forward to working with them through this process. It is indeed my pleasure, representing the PrAP Committee, to fully support this proposal.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Good evening, Chairman Izzy.
Yes.
And council, council members. My name is Dean Rundell. I was a member of the Governor's Commission. I'm also a founding member of the Pikesville Armory Foundation, but you've heard all about that. So I'm wearing three hats. That's one of them. Second hat, I'm also a member of the historic Sudbrook Park neighborhood and president of that neighborhood. And we're within a walking distance of the Armory. Its proposed development will provide our neighborhood, as well as others in proximity to the Armory, much-needed public open space for recreation and gathering. Pikesville currently has no open space whatsoever that, where everyone can be welcomed and everyone feels comfortable. Development of the Armory will also, most assuredly, increase the value of properties in Sudbrook Park, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods. So Sudbrook Park is in favor of this legislation. And my third hat, you know, this time of year, three hats is probably, in my head, is probably good. But this is personal from me. I am a fellow in the American Society of Landscape Architects, as a student, professor, public servant, and private practitioner for over 60 years, and have had the opportunity to design successful public open spaces in large and small communities around the country. I can tell you unequivocally that the development of the Armory as envisioned by the community I can tell you unequivocally that the development of the Armory, as envisioned by the community, will change the trajectory of the social and the economic future of Pikesville. It will not only bring new investment to the Reisterstown Road corridor, but will enhance livability, increase property values, and make Pikesville an extremely desirable place to live and work. Its impact will be felt not only locally by the residents of Pikesville, but across Baltimore County and on into the North Atlantic region. It is that kind of legacy project. I know because I've been involved in such projects and seen the successes in similar communities. This legislation will certainly enhance PAF's efforts to realize this Pikesville dream. So I personally am in favor of the legislation as well. And I want to thank Izzy, and Justin, and Carlos, and Chris Mudd, who's not here, but for drafting this legislation. Certainly going to enhance our ability to move forward, so thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Ruth Goldstein.
I don't get to see the clock. All right, that's a little scary. I'm Ruth Goldstein. First of all, good evening. I can't believe it's 7:00, and the fact that all these people are here just attests to the dedication of so many different members of the community. My comments, I hope, will be just under three minutes, so patience. As I said, my name is Ruth Goldstein, and I live at Seven Slade Avenue in Pikesville, which is almost a stone's throw from the Pikesville Armory. As a lifelong Pikesville resident, I have attended events at the Armory for, yes, almost 70 years. And it was indeed a central community hub for most of my lifetime, a place where I took my daughter to her first circus, attended concerts and trade shows. At one time, it was even my polling place. I am also, my other hat, president of Thousand Friends of Pikesville, Inc. I've been told by my mentor that I must always mention the Inc., Pikesville's champion for public art, and was a member of the 2017 Governor's Commission to study the future of Pikesville. And now the future is here. With Bill 9823, the Pikesville Armory has the chance to blossom again, this time as a new community hub that will bring life, not just to the 14-acre campus with its multitude of proposed uses, but also, and at least equally importantly, to Pikesville itself, an aging, inner-ring suburb in need of reinvestment, and to the Reisterstown Road commercial corridor, which, yes, is also a bit shabby and down at the heels and ripe for development. The energy thrown off by the recreation of the Pikesville Armory as a central community hub will be the catalyst for Pikesville's renewal. Using a Main Street model for revitalization that has worked so well just up the road in Reisterstown, combined with the participation of Seawall, a visionary developer that is committed to not just properties but communities, Pikesville's future is bright. We have already started by launching Pikesville's first publicly-funded mural. Just yesterday, the call for artists was disseminated around the state, and we've already received responses, really from the leading, one of Maryland's leading Pikesville muralists. So we're very hopeful. Over these past seven years, I kept my vision for Pikesville Armory, I kept hoping that my vision for the Pikesville Armory was not just another pipe dream, because I've had a few of them in my 70-plus years. But then pipe dreams are for dreamers, and my dreams for the Pikesville Armory are closer to reality than ever with Bill 9823, offered by my councilman, Izzy Patoka, of the beautiful Second District, which I hope you will pass by acclamation. And finally, since he can't be here in person today, I want to acknowledge one of the dreamers-in-chief, Howard Needle, who I always like to call the mayor of Pikesville, and without whom we would not all be gathered here today. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ruth, and thanks for acknowledging Howard.
Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Susan Williams.
My name is Susan Williams, and I also wear three hats. I'm probably the newest member of all the group because I moved into the beautiful Second District just two years ago and got swept up by the enthusiasm of a lot of the people in the communities. And I'm now co-president of the Pine Ridge Association. I sit on the PrAP with all the members here, but I have a bit of a unique third hat, and that is that I've been working on development, and I qualify as a zoning expert for court since 1980, when Izzy and I started working in the planning department on the very same day. So it's kind of like old home week with Councilman Patoka. The first thing is, everyone in Pikesville is very excited about the Armory, and they have selected a great development team. I know all the companies on that team, and they really have selected some outstanding professionals. When the legislation was introduced, everybody was enthusiastic and said, well, we have a few issues. And just because of my background, I kind of said, here are the questions we have. And I'd like to commend the councilman's office, definitely the Armory, and our PrAP chair. We really all got together in the classic way that democracy works, and the dirt is always in the details, and recommended amendments to the bill that everyone thought made a stronger piece of legislation. So I'm here wholeheartedly in support of the Armory. And as I said in the first time round, this is a brilliant way to handle this zoning issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Councilman Crandall, Susan's a planner also.
Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Mel Mintz. Mr. Mintz, you are on as a panelist. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the county council. Nice to renew acquaintances, Chairman Jones, and Councilman Catch, and Councilman Marks. Once again, it's been a while.
Pleasure. Always a pleasure.
Thank you. My name is Mel Mintz, former county councilman representing Pikesville and chairman emeritus and co-founder of the Thousand Friends of Pikesville. It has been 12 years since I dreamed up this concept, then joined by Howard Needle, Pat Keller, and Dean Rundell. They were joined by Tom Feketa, our chair, and Deb Patterson. The original plan that we came up with gained the backing of over 1,000 residents as a result of 100 one-on-one interviews with community stakeholders, plus four public meetings, each attended by over 100 people. That's who and what I did, councilman. Bill 9823 is set to meet legal sufficiency. It is one more step in this long road. It marks the third time the original general concept has been enshrined in actual legislation. First, the adopted legislation on December 6, 2021. That legislation authored by Councilman Izzy established the Pikesville Revitalization Action Plan Committee and the charge of implementing the action plan, including redevelopment of the Armory, and in the state bond bill authorization. Now this third legislation. This process generated compliance with the action plan legislation by having the partnership between the Armory Foundation and the Action Plan Committee accomplished. That engagement and partnership has resulted in the authorized committee reviewing the current legislation, successfully attaining some changes, and encourages your approval. This development comports with about 80% of that original visualized dream way back then. The property owner and the councilmen have given assurances there will be ways to address any problems with the RTA and community review that may arise. The critical feature, particularly for me, included in this proposed bill will be language that once more speaks to the general original concept. That concept was that artwork, artist studios, and art galleries will be the key unique element that transforms this unique property. And as this concept has transformed so many other challenged commercial communities all across this nation, it will thus transform the entire commercial core of Pikesville. The general concept now, in this third piece of legislation before you, comports with the previous legislations. It comports with what the property owners said, and documented, and renderings in public instances, and with an unprecedented engagement pushed by the county executive Osheski for input to the community. I must add that with the deft, sophisticated hand of Samantha O'Neal and county executive Osheski, we probably wouldn't be here. In conclusion, I am convinced the redevelopment, according to this vision, will transform the entire commercial core into vibrancy, in fact, the entire community. The Armory will become the gem and the magnet that leads to that transformation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mintz. We appreciate you hanging in there, and certainly appreciate you sharing your comments and some brief history with us. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Michaela Okta.
My name is Michaela Okta, and I'm a resident of Colonial. After living in Baltimore City, I have more time playing with my friends and enjoying the neighborhood. Since I started the TV, I started to take kids off their phones, and I put other kids. I recently learned about the Pikesville Armory, and I believe it is a well-thought-out concept. The idea of water parks, ground, and walking paths are good ideas to different people and things, especially kids. I'm a big wrecker, so a library and walking distance sounds perfect. As a future user and founder of the TV kids, I can't wait to see this practice.
Did we lose her? Oh, that was a conclusion. Okay. All right, well, thank you very, very much, Michaela. We appreciate you testify and appreciate your level of engagement at your age. So thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Barry Nabozny. Mr. Nabozny, you are on as a panelist, and you may begin your testimony.
Good evening, everyone. I will not bore you. It sounds like everyone has said pretty much what I would say. Just a quick background on me, I'm a born-and-bred Second Districter. I live, I'd say, a two-minute drive to the Armory. My office is also a two-minute or less drive to the Armory. I sell, I'd say, almost the majority of real estate here in this district, or this Pikesville area around the Armory. It's much needed, and I want to thank everyone for all of their support, especially Izzy, for all the hard work you're doing, and the council for hopefully passing this legislation to allow us to move forward and have this much-needed amenity within our community. Thank you very much, and my apologies. I'm home here speaking, and I know all of you are there and haven't had dinner or anything. And I really admire you and appreciate all the time and energy everyone's putting in. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you for testifying.
Thanks, Barry.
Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Goodman. Ms. Goodman, you are on as a panelist, and you may begin your testimony.
Thank you so much. Now I feel guilty, now that we've talked about you all missing dinner. But I wanted to say, as a member of the arts community, I'm sorry, can you hear me? Yes, we can hear. Okay. As a member of the arts community, I'm really excited about this project. I was invited, as one of the speakers mentioned earlier, about bringing in the community to see the Pikesville Armory and hear about the new redevelopment ideas. I was very excited to be a part of one of those tours and to be with other colleagues to be able to just get excited about each space that we viewed and what could be done there artistically. I'm a music producer throughout the state of Maryland and also the founder and director of Dance Baltimore. And so I, of course, have so many ideas already and can see so many ways that this redevelopment project can revitalize Pikesville. Interestingly enough, we have dance classes in Pikesville every, a couple of times a week. I've been driving past the Armory for a few years now, every week, and did not know that it had been abandoned as long as it had been, just always admired the space and thinking of what so much could be done there. And to hear that this project was already underway for so many years, and it's coming to fruition now, is just really an exciting thing to see. I'm anxious about the opportunities for artists in a variety of ways. Actually, I graduated from Northwestern High School, so I'm very familiar with the area, and I've produced music in the Northwest area, not in Pikesville, but at Silver and Arboretum. A few years ago, I had a jazz series at Silver and Arboretum for about five years. And it went on every summer and gathered so many people throughout the community. It was truly a project of the community for the community, and it did so much to bring together a great diversity of people and who just enjoyed the music and got to know one another and share. And what it did for that area for that period of time, would love to see things like that happen at the Pikesville Armory, which I know that having these opportunities for artists will do. This kind of project not only brings the arts to the community, it also supports local artists, which there are many artists in our community, both visual, performing, literary, who all are very talented people and earn their living through their crafts. And this will be another venue that they can do that. So I'm in great support of this project and just know and ditto what all the others have said and really hope to see it come to pass very soon. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you so much for being here and hanging in there with us this evening. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our final speaker this evening is Chris Mudd. Mr. Mudd, you are on as a panelist.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Sorry that I couldn't be there with you this evening, but it's a, I'm glad to be able to testify here. I'm Chris Mudd with Venable here representing or work with the Pikesville Armory Foundation. It's been a pleasure to work with them on this project. I really was just going to testify to answer any questions that may come up, and it seems like there's a significant amount of support, which is great. So all I'm going to do is just ask the council to approve the legislation as drafted, subject to some amendments that have been worked through with folks in the community. And I also want to commend the folks on the Armory Foundation, as well as all the other volunteers in the community who've really worked to put together a great use. And it's been a pleasure to work with everybody to try and find a way to make it work within the confines of the zoning regulations. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mudd. Happy birthday, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'd like to thank all the speakers. Clearly, I'm in the neighboring jurisdiction, but I'm certainly a big supporter of the Pikesville Armory and appreciate everything everyone is doing to redevelop that property. I can tell you, I had no idea, having I can tell you, I had no idea, having lived in the area for many years, that it was so big and it went so far back. I mean, from what you see on Reisterstown Road, you just have no idea, let you go up there, stand on that roof, and look out at all the land. So we will move right along. Again, thank everybody for hanging in there. Well, Mr. Gutwoll, one, two, three, four items. How fast can you take care of four items? Two minutes. Before you, before, I was going to give you a minute and a half, but now that we've taken care of our friends from Pikesville, I'll give you two minutes, maybe three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Good evening, members of the council. The first bill, 9423, adopts the 2021 International Plumbing Code, the 2021 International Fuel-Gas Code, and the Liquified Petroleum Gas Code, and the National Fire Protection Association as part of our Plumbing and Gas Fitting Code of Baltimore County. As you know, we have to update these every so often. This puts us in line, it really is just moving from the national code to the international code, which provides some specificity and be aligned with the state code, plumbing and gas fitting. Moving straight along, I'll go to the next bill, which is 9523. This bill is a companion bill to the policy manuals that we adopted, yeah, that we adopted last week.
Go ahead, Mr. Gutwoll.
That's hilarious.
No, no, no.
It wasn't even a minute, I got to the second bill already.
It was a good trial, Mr. Gutwoll. Go right ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Gutwoll.
Way to go, Chris. Way to go.
All right. The next bill is, like I said, is the development review process. I think I've mentioned a lot of this to many council members. This is aligning the fact that, you know, our processes have changed over the years. The code currently is outdated and refers to old processes. We're just trying to put it in line with the current practice and processes. I do know we have an amendment because there is unintended consequences, so we will have amendment on Monday on that bill, but it's, that's the intent and the direction of that bill was just to follow the current practices of how we review process to amend a plan. 9623 is dealing with the definition of minor development. As you know, this bill, we modified sort of our practices under the policy manual in terms of minor development. This just establishes what would qualify as a minor development within the code and make it aligned with public works agreements and then differences between the two. So this basically highlights what, gives more clarity as to what would be considered as a minor development, listing out the things that would qualify it for. Bill number 9723, currently in the code, there's the process that allows the Director of PAI to waive the hearing officer's hearing. That has never been, from my understanding, never been a practice. It's never been a practice of mine to waive the hearing examiner's hearing, so I'm removing, we're removing that provision within the code. Thank you very much.
Wow. Thank you very much, Mr. Gutwoll.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the members?
That was pretty funny.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. All right, everyone, well, listen. Oh, almost, almost. You're absolutely right. Bill 9923, page 38, Councilman Catch.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm only going to take an hour. I've taken some of our distinguished colleagues' time. Anyhow, this legislation addresses a situation where a company called Liberty Pure, which is located in northern Baltimore County, and what this company does is they provide well service, testing the wells, putting in systems to clean the water should it need to be cleaned, digging wells, et cetera. They have grown out of their facility on Paper Mill Road and were looking for property to relocate in Baltimore County and Harford County. They did find a place in Harford County, and so anyhow, I worked with them, and they're going to relocate in Baltimore County as long as this particular legislation is enacted. The property in question is in the Ketchment area of the Manor Conservancy, and I told them that I would not do this legislation unless they worked out an agreement with the Manor Conservancy, which they did. I held the bill last Monday because I did not have the agreement yet. I do have the agreement, and the Manor Conservancy is on board, and so I hopefully will pass this bill, and they'll stay in Baltimore County, serving the people of Baltimore County in the beautiful, magnificent, tremendous Third District.
I really appreciate your efforts, Councilman Catch, to do what you can to keep them in Baltimore County. We don't want to lose any businesses.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I say that those inclined to brag are usually doing so in order to cover up some deep-seated insecurities. Looking at you, Catch and Patoka.
It's, no, it's simply the truth. That's what it's all about.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So I would like to quote Muhammad Ali, and Muhammad Ali said, "It's not bragging if it's true." Thank you very much.
I was sitting there wondering, when you said, "Quote Muhammad Ali," I was thinking, "He said a lot." So, any additional questions, comments from the members? I guess we are adjourned.